Good evening. Welcome to this May 1st, 2023, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and bring your attention first to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now is, now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, roll call, please.
Grantquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Now entertain a motion to approve the full agenda. Motion is second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number eighteen on the council agenda under special presentations. And tonight, this is a new recognition that we are doing within the city of Norfolk, and it was compelled by what I think is a very neat story surrounding the actions of Max Blunk. And Max is here tonight with his family, and so we're going to talk a little bit about what Max did to receive the Distinguished Citizenship Recognition Award and the People Power Award. So to begin this, I'm going to read a special proclamation that we had prepared in Max's honor for his efforts. The proclamation reads, whereas, for his act of distinguished citizenship and good neighborliness, in this instance, for orchestrating an Easter egg hunt in Norfolk Central Park, because, in Max's own words, "Some people didn't have Easter egg hunts, so I just did it for them." And whereas People Power Awards are distributed to those Norfolkans who of their own accord, motivated by goodwill and loving and caring for their neighbors as themselves, commit acts of extraordinary thoughtfulness, generosity, and compassion, demonstrating the power of people helping people and neighbor helping neighbor throughout our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, along with the Norfolk City Council, hereby recognize Max Blunk for his extraordinary act of citizenship. So Max, if you'd please join me in front, you can bring your family along with you. I'm gonna hand over the proclamation. We'll get a picture, okay? Before we do that, you guys want to introduce yourselves? Don't want to put you on the spot, but just tell us who you are.
I'm Chelsea. I'm Max's mom.
Jacob, I'm Isaiah.
Hudson, his oldest brother.
And here's Max, star of the show. Max, do you want to tell us what you did? What motivated you to do the Easter egg hunt?
To help other people that because some people don't get to do stuff.
Yeah, it was kind of spur of the moment, huh? You woke up Easter morning and decided to do it. Is that how it happened? Good for you. Thank you. We appreciate it. Let's get a picture, okay?
You want an S in it?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yep. So we do want to recognize acts like that going into the future. So I think Nick Stevenson, our communications director, is gonna put out some information to the community as to how people can nominate those individuals who are committing acts of extraordinary citizenship. So again, thank you to Max and his family for being here tonight. Item number nineteen, the Connection Project presentation. The Connection Project is here tonight to talk a little bit about the work they do in the community. So I welcome their leadership forward to greet us tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Robert Barrows, I am the executive director of Connection Project. Talk a little bit about what we do, our history, and then where we're going. So the Connection Project is the only peer-run nonprofit organization located in Norfolk, Nebraska, in the Region Four Behavioral Health Systems. So our mission is to walk with people with mental health and/or substance use challenges on a journey toward recovery and wellness. We do this by building mutual relationships based on peer support principles. All employees and the majority of our board members are also peers who have dealt with challenges with mental health or substance use issues. So the Connection Project has been in operation since 2019 as a drop-in center for individuals looking to formulate and build relationships with others who have mental health or substance use challenges. The Connection Project funding historically has come from Region Four Behavioral Health, or certainly, excuse me, Region Four Behavioral Health System. However, we have expanded that. We are funded by grants and things from organizations such as United Way and also the county, Madison County. So the Connection Project, we currently, we operate a wellness center. It's a drop-in center. It provides place for people with substance use issues to come in and be safe. And also, we provide recreation opportunities as well, as well as peer support services to them. Now, daily, we do see homeless individuals that come into our doors as a place to relax, eat, socialize, and work on housing alternatives. We have always aimed to build up peer respite services in our area. Now, on most days, we do receive up to ten homeless individuals as well as, you know, up to twenty-five individuals from the mental health and substance use recovery community who come in. And since 2019, since opening, we've seen over just about twenty thousand individuals, individual sign-ins, and that comes from about one thousand unique individual people that have come and utilized our services. So going forward, our goal is to expand our community wellness center with the addition of twenty-four-hour peer respite services. These peer respite services are gonna allow, are gonna be available to the community at all hours of the day and help alleviate the burden on our community, emergency services, hospital services, and families. The wellness center will concentrate on the eight facets of wellness. These are emotional, occupational, intellectual, environmental, financial, physical, spiritual, and social, education, employment assistance, finding treatment or housing, and helping strengthen pathways of recovery, all encompassed by peer support principles. We will work with law enforcement, emergency services, and faith regional health services to provide an alternative to being hospitalized or visits to the emergency room, as well as visits to jail and things like that. So we're gonna do this by serving individuals who need shelter and resources, or those who need to take a break by either using our day wellness center or providing overnight stays, all surrounded by peer support specialists and resources. Going forward, we have already started the planning process, and we are currently looking for a suitable location in order to expand into this peer respite. We have funding from, or backing from the county, as well as Midtown Health Center in order to be able to do this. With that, we are looking to hire more people in peer support services in our area. We're gonna hire up to eight, eight individuals to staff this, as well as our day center going forward.
Great. Thank you, Rob, for coming forward. I think not a lot of people in the community recognize that you've been at this work for a while and what you do. Do you have a timeline right now for the overnight center? Where are you at in the process there?
In the process, currently, right now, we're looking for a suitable location, either hospital, our day center services, as well as peer respite. So we're still in the process of finding, finding a spot. We are working on our funding as well. Once we get a suitable location found, or funding found, training and all of that, by the time we get our policies and everything in place, we're looking at six months to a year, we will be able to start bringing people in, utilizing our services.
Okay. On a, on a regular day, right now, how many people utilize the services that you offer, on average?
We're seeing about twenty-five people per day who utilize our day center. And that's a mixture of, again, people, mental health and substance use recovery community and the homeless population here in Norfolk.
Great.
Is there a training protocol for the folks who look at the highest levels of disability?
Yes, currently, so we also do provide training, mental health services. So the training for the individuals who are coming in is going to be, we're gonna have state-certified peer support specialists. There is a state certification for that, as well as IPS, which is intentional peer support. That's the certification that we currently use. So people will be trained in that, as well as mental health first aid, CPR, and the various other programs that, you know, would fit, you know, what we do.
All right. I don't have a question, but I appreciate you coming forward and bringing awareness to us, to this, your organization, and it's very much needed. So appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Unheralded work, but very important work, so. Any other questions or comments for Rob while he's here with us? Very good. Thanks again for coming tonight. All right, that takes us to our regular agenda and item number twenty. I would look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for requests for qualifications from design, build, and construction manager at risk firms to submit letter of interest, letters of interest for one or more of the following city park projects: the fishing dock at Skyview Lake and the Liberty Bell restroom.
I'll make a motion to advertise for requests for qualifications.
Second that.
Okay, motion second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Nate Powell, our Norfolk Parks and Recreation Director.
Mayor, council, thank you. This is a new process that, that we are going through here tonight. Council did adopt a resolution for design build contracts last year. This did allow us to have a couple of projects. We did the Artificial Turf Memorial Project and also the Skate Park Pump Track as well. Both of those were through a source well contract, so we were able to go direct and get that done. This is a little bit different process when you don't have a source well contract to use. So, you know, why does the design build process work? In my experience, it allows us to keep our costs down, you know, rather than over-designing a project that we can't afford. You know, we know that total before we even go to do the project. We know what the design cost and the cost of the facility are gonna be ahead of time. We will also, I think it helps us find more local interest in the projects. You know, we don't always need to hire a contractor from Omaha for a parks project, which we've done on playgrounds and different things in the past. This is also good for specialty items in parks. You know, most are pre-designed, like a fishing dock. They're pre-designed, ready to go. We just need a local contractor to help us out and get that purchased and built and installed into the lake. So the fishing dock that's on the, that is from the Kohler donation, and that's what we're looking for, for that. The restroom for Liberty Bell is a budgeted item for, for that park. We have a new playground going in, and it'd be good to have a restroom nearby there. The process from here for, this is again for non-state bid projects, this would include the dock and the Liberty Bell restroom. We would put out a letter of interest and select three firms. It's a thirty-day process. There's a set of criteria that we have to make that selection of those three firms. Then we will send out to those firms an RFP with budget and schedule parameters. There will be a selection committee. That includes two members of council, city administrator, the individual that developed the criteria for the, for their performance, the city engineer, the department head responsible for the project, that'd be myself, and, and also a resident of Norfolk. So those would be the individuals on the selection committee. And from there, we would rank the three firms that are there, and then we would make a choice based on the highest-ranked firm, have some negotiations with them, and then we would send that to council. So that's the process. There's a long ways to go. For more details on the dock and Liberty Bell, I can't tell you the costs yet, and we just know what our budgets are. So we would be bringing that to council when this process was complete. If there's any questions.
Thank you, Nate. Any questions? Nate, you briefly mentioned it, the Kohler Estate gift will essentially fund the fishing dock at Skyview Lake. Can you just say a little bit more about that, that donation to Norfolk Parks?
Yep. That, the Kohler donation is from Mr. Kohler. He did donate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards a dock at, at Skyview Lake, a fishing dock, particularly for youth. And he also, there'll also be a picnic table and a bench there in his recognition. And, and so that's, you know, that's where we're at with that. They've also donated another six hundred and ninety-eight thousand towards youth sports in Norfolk as part of that donation as well. So we're working on, on options for that.
All right. One little question. Is the plan to be a handicap-accessible dock?
That's correct, yeah.
In general, I just want to note, I commend staffer, looking and looking into and exploring the design, build, and CMR approaches to these kind of unique projects. We adopted policies not too long ago to allow that to happen. And in many cases, I think it's a more efficient, more precise, and more affordable approach to delivering on these projects. So kudos on exploring that out and pursuing that policy. Anything else? Republican input on this?
Yes, my name is Tim Ernst, and I have some questions for Nate. I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but you want more park stuff. It seems to me you don't take care of what you have. You want more camping spots out of?
Sir, you need to direct your comments to the council, please.
Okay, you want more camping spots out at Taha Zuka. That's new people coming to town, correct? What are they gonna look at? They're gonna look at a bridge that's sitting out there that's got more paint off than it does on. It's been closed for over two years. There's no excuse for it. There's a really nice, pretty water fountain there that hasn't been run for a couple of years. There's no excuse for it. If you're not gonna take care of what you have, I hate to think what those fountains cost. It's probably a couple hundred grand. And why don't we fix them? Make them work? That's what the people coming to town, that's what they see. And I noticed he fixed the entrance to one where the car took it out. He took the other one down, too. You know, if we need all this help to tell us what we need for parks and stuff, why don't we take care of what we have? And also, since Skyview is a public park, I think the public deserves to know what kind of deal Norfolk Outfitting has, that he can store his equipment there and have his own separate building there all year long. Is he paying rent on that and stuff, or is that just a freebie? If it's a freebie, everybody should be able to do it.
He pays a percentage of revenue.
What?
A percentage of revenue.
We're getting percent off of that?
Yeah.
Because it's not a storage area. And that's all.
Thank you. Any other public input? I think it's worth noting, I know there's been council members involved in discussions on improvements at Taha Zuka and plans going forward for that. Councilman Webb addressed the Norfolk outfitting agreement. Any kind of business that would want to rent space at a public park would have to have that kind of agreement in place with the city. Nate, is there any comments you want to make in regards to response to any of that?
I'd be happy to. We're working on a number of improvements, the bridge. We just, you know, got the quotes on, we got the beams ready to go. We're gonna be taking those boards off in the next week or two here and getting that bridge rebuilt and replaced. I don't know about the fountain. I'll have to check into that. If there's not a fountain working, I'm not aware of it. But we also have just got our top dresser. We're gonna be leveling our fields out at Taha. We're replacing the backstops at the softball complex. They're old and outdated. We have a lot of other projects that are coming down the pipe. Most of these things have been difficult getting products over the last year. We waited a year on the top dresser. We just got it this week. So it's kind of a work in progress, but we are making those improvements and moving the parks department forward.
Thank you, Nate. Hey, would it also be accurate to say that historically, parks has not been granted a lot of resources to do the upkeep on projects like this, and we're trying to change that?
That's correct. I've heard that they don't, didn't spend money. And so if you don't spend money, it's hard to improve your facilities sometimes.
And I appreciate your ability, ability with this, with your leadership to walk and chew gum at the same time, fix the old and take on the new at the same time. So, thank you, Nate. All right. If nothing else, I would ask for your vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item twenty-one, we'd look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one with Elkhorn Paving Construction Company for the Concrete Improvements Fiscal Year 2022 to '23 project resulting in a net increase of five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars.
I'll make a motion of consideration of approval for change order number one.
Motion second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Anna Allen, our Assistant City Engineer.
Thank you.
Evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a request to approve a change order for the, the concrete improvements on First Street between Benjamin Avenue, south to Nebraska Avenue, where our current First Street project is. I know everybody probably knows that that area of First Street, the, the southbound lanes have been closed for a few months now. After this winter, we noticed a lot of damage and a lot of potholes that came up on that portion of street. So we decided to get together with our current contractor, Elkhorn Paving, to put together this change order to get that repaired. I believe Elkhorn Paving is ready to move out there when school gets out, so they can work on the repairs on that South First Street. This contract, the current contract for our citywide concrete improvements for '22, '23 was six hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents. This change order would add another five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars to this contract, resulting in a one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents for, to add on for the repairs of First Street, which are definitely needed. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Yeah, I wasn't on the subcommittee for this. Would the five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, is that coming from CHAF tax, or is that coming out of?
Yes. So we had in the budget, one million dollars for concrete repairs for this budget year. And we had, the other areas that we had identified in town was, that contract came up to about six hundred and thirty thousand. So we're using the remainder of that. The other funding, the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars will be coming from some of the surface seal, the money in the budget from surface seal would be used to, to make up the difference for this contract.
In that subcommittee meeting, there was some discussion that they were gonna be on, that the contractor's gonna be on First Street, then they're gonna pick up and go to another location. Is that still the thing? Are they gonna, once they get to First Street, they will stay on First Street till that is completed and then move elsewhere?
I think that is currently still the plan. The contractor was gonna come out, they were gonna start on the First Street repairs. For sure, they will get down through Georgia Avenue this summer. Most likely, they'll come do repairs and then move up to another area of town to start on. Some repairs move back to finish this First Street. But the area around the middle school would be repaired prior to school getting back in session in the fall.
I believe in that. The conversation that was taking place is that if they do pick up and go elsewhere that's been identified, the funds that we will not get, there'll only be one mobilization for First Street, correct? Regardless whether they pick up and move and come back.
I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions, council? Comments? Okay. Thank you, Anna. Any public input on this?
Jim McKenzie, I guess, I just have a question. If we know why that concrete broke up the way it did, I don't think that concrete's that old. Looks like it's nine inches thick. It doesn't look like, from a layman's point of view, that it's too much undermined. It seems surface-related. So I'm just kind of curious if we know why that concrete broke up, and if we learned anything from that that we can try and prevent that in the future.
Those outside lanes were added mid-nineties, mid-early nineties. I think that was a DOT, federal aid or federal assistance project. That was, best guess, that's when there was a shift in pits, and so it, in the aggregate pits or aggregate sources. And it's tied into that ASR, that ASR activity. It seems to, it has certainly identified that southbound outside, southbound lane. We do see a little bit on the northbound outside lane directly across from the middle school, but you don't see as much, you know, throughout that whole section in the northbound side or the center. It is more typical that you'll see that towards the outside as water sheets off the street and runs towards the gutter. So it's picking up the salts and stuff that go down on, for ice and snow purposes. So that tends to collect out there. The joints, it gets down into that joints, and then, I'm sorry, it gets absorbed by the concrete and over freeze-thaw cycles. That's what breaks it up, and what we're seeing there. This winter, for, I'm gonna guess maybe there's more trees on that side. I don't, I can't exactly tell you why so much of that southbound outside lane, but as, I'm gonna guess there's some thermal activity going on in there that's more prevalent on that, on that southbound lane than the northbound lane. As that, as that gets into the joints, and that salt evaporates inside the pores in the concrete, and then more water, you know, salt attracts water. So that water gets then sucked into the pores. When the concrete freezes, that water expands, and so it causes more and more breakup. That, then, you know, we always see during the spring thaw period, when the ground underneath the pavement is frozen, and we get some thawing going on, on the surface, and there's water on the surface. That water can't get down into the subgrade below the pavement as traffic is driving on that water, creates some hydraulic pressure that just further breaks down that concrete and breaks down any, any aggregate patch mix that we have inside there. I would say in general, it's tied to drainage. That section of road has a very shallow profile to it, and so water does like to sit in that curb area over there, has trouble getting into the drop inlets. curb area over there, has trouble getting into the drop inlets. Long term, we would look at coming back in after the concrete repair next year or certainly within two years and doing a mill and overlay on that to cap, get all that ASR off the top inch, inch and a half or so, and then put an oil cap on top of it.
I mean, I know we've got that ASR issue for a while. Is there any analysis of maybe other streets that might be impacted by that? And should we be doing a mill and overlay on some of those to prevent further damage?
Yes. You know, just right out here in front of City Hall on Fifth Street's a good example. That's starting to deteriorate much faster. We've got more over here on Broch, right across, right in front of the police station, same situation. And there's, there's many, many more here in town that have that ASR issue. As much as we can get out there and fix any potholes and then do a mill and overlay, that's really where we need to be focusing dollars. Once that's off and you got that, that, that oil cap on there, that'll really prevent, oh, for the next twenty, thirty years, forty years, that ASR activity.
Thanks. I just think it'd be a good idea if we did a more in-depth determination on that and when we're doing our street plan, prepare for that because that'll save us a lot of dollars in bigger repairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item twenty-two would look for a motion to consider approval, approval to award a contract to Rutchins Construction Incorporated of Tilden, Nebraska, for the sanitary sewer replacement Monroe Avenue to Logan Street project for an amount of one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Motion second. And to hear some background on this, we'll hear from Chad Roberts, Water Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What we got in front of you here is the request approval for the contract with Rutchins for the sanitary sewer line replacement, thirty-six inch sewer that's getting replaced down there on, from Fourth and Monroe down to Jackson over to the water, or the wastewater treatment plant. The contract came in, we had one bid that we received on April twentieth of two thousand twenty-three, and that came in at that one million, nine hundred and eighty-five dollar and five hundred and fifteen dollars. The cost estimate for this project that we had from Olson's was one million, seven hundred and five and eighty-two dollars. So one million, seven hundred and five thousand, eighty-two dollars is what the cost estimate was. So we do have a little bit of a difference there from the cost estimate to the, to the contract that we are receiving right now. Approximately two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. So we are looking at some cost savings on this project, even though we got the bid in. Some of those items include, over on Fourth Street there, we have a thirty-inch line in there currently right now, and there's some talk about seeing if we can run a twenty-four inch HDPE pipe through that line, the existing line. That'll save the jack and bore contract that we have with this current bid. We don't know what that cost savings is yet, but it's an option, an option that we're looking at. The other option that we're looking at is the type of pipe material we have. Right now, this one was bidded out as a clay pipe for, for the larger pipe. We're looking at the possibility of using fiberglass pipe to see if that can bring that cost down a little bit more. So, so, and those are the normal things that we normally do on these contracts, is we're always trying to find the best bang for the buck. So with that, city's requesting approval from, from you guys for the contract that we awarded with Rutchins. Any questions?
Chad, can you?
Go ahead.
Well, can you explain what the difference would be with the twenty-four inch pipe of what we, if we would see or notice? Obviously, we quoted it with a new pipe rather than.
So right now, right now on Fourth Street there, we got a block there, it's about four hundred and eighty feet, that has a current thirty-inch pipe in there right now. And that pipe is that one that needed to be relined and we couldn't do the reline project on this because the pipe material's beyond a condition to have it relined. So the HDP pipe is a smaller diameter, doesn't have the bells on it like a regular PVC pipe does, so it's all uniform sized. So they can pull that in as one chunk through that pipe. And then we can go, go ahead and man it out to manholes and we'll have a, a pipe that can serve the conditions of that twenty-four inch that we're looking at putting on the west side of the street. So the capacity will both be the same, it's just a different style of pipe that we can pull through there. And so we're looking at that option to see if it's a possibility. Otherwise, right now, what we're planning on doing is doing a jack and bore on the west side of the street. That way there, we're not going to tear up the yards and stuff, we'll be pushing the pipe through the ground and not tearing up the driveways and the streets and the homeowners' yards in that area, so.
And what about the fiberglass versus clay? The longevity of the.
Well, and that's new for us because, you know, a lot of times, all of our projects previously have always been PVC or clay, mostly clay. We have had a couple vendors reach out to us, offered up this new idea of using fiberglass pipe. So right now, we're just on the front end of it. That option came after we already had this contract that bid it out. So it's just an option to see, is there a cost savings there that we could use?
About longevity of the pipe?
My understanding with that is about the same as what a PVC pipe is, so we should be able to get that sixty years, sixty, eighty years out of it. We do have some fiberglass pipe, we got one area in Norfolk, that's that fourth main from the Third and Prospect List Station, that goes over here to roughly, I think it's back behind East Park Coast Station overnight at neighborhood here. That one there is a fiberglass pipe and we've had that in the ground since, I think that station was put in in the sixties, so, and we haven't had any problems with that yet.
I know Rutchins is typically low bid on one they bid against another contractor. Is there a reason why we didn't have any other bids come in?
It might be just the, the timing. You know, we were kind of later to the, to the plate with this one here, we were kind of hoping to have the bids out there in that late February, early March timeframe. We were a little bit later with that one there, so I don't know if they've already had their projects already planned, planned out and stuff for the year, so.
Yeah, a lot of that, probably.
So. Anything else?
I guess the, maybe that somewhat obvious question is with the extra two hundred and eighty thousand, where does the funds come from to pay for that, if this is approved?
Well, our previous project that we had, that first phase here, we had the reline project on the twenty-first, the twenty-one inch up by the Sunset Plaza coming down Omaha Avenue there. That one there, we had approximately six hundred thousand dollars savings on that project from the, what we had in the budget, so. So we're saving quite a bit on that one there, so that money there can be reused for this, this project here to pick up that extra additional cost.
But we'll still try and look at these alternative ways.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Anything else? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Chad. Any public input on this? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item twenty-three would look for a motion to consider approval of an application for Economic Development Program Funds for the Women's Empowering Lifeline for one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ten cents to assist with the acquisition of property to establish a childcare center in Norfolk and authorizing appropriate, appropriate city officials to formulate and sign the documents necessary to effectuate this loan.
Offer for consideration?
I'll sec.
Motion second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Candace Alder, our City Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to give you a bit of history on this project and then we have representatives from the well that can really go over the details of what their plan is and what they propose to do if rewarded these funds. So a bit of history on this, on February twenty-first, members of the ED Subcommittee, they heard project information from staff members of Women's Empowering Lifeline or also known as the well. And they had submitted an application for Economic Development Program Funds, and these are commonly referred to as our LB eight forty funds. So prior to the well application, the Subcommittee had reviewed an application submitted by Elkhorn Valley Community Development Corporation, and that was your Neighbor Works application that was reviewed and awarded last month. The situation was unique in that both of these applicants had requested the full amount of the award. And so because the project or the programs due to sunset on September thirtieth, we're now, we're no longer collecting funds, there's no more property taxes being collected to feed into this program. So we are at the end of it. On February twenty-fourth, a special ED Subcommittee was called to discuss how to best proceed with this. Staff had not encountered this issue before, we haven't been at the end of this program. And so we really wanted direction on how to proceed for those two requests for the full amount. So after discussion, it was decided to consider dividing the remaining three hundred thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars between the projects. So the city could then be assisting alongside workforce housing efforts as well as early childhood education and care. And so a motion was made to move both applications through the process with approximately a hundred thousand dollars bookmarked towards the well and then two hundred thousand towards Neighbor Works for that grant match to establish that revolving loan fund. So the Subcommittee indicated that Neighbor Works' application was allowed to go through and proceed to the full council for consideration, and you guys did move forward with that and awarded those funds. And it was decided at that meeting that the hundred thousand dollars that was bookmarked for the well at that meeting would be good through the contracted date on the purchase agreement for the property. And so what happened during that meeting is the well had not provided the proof of financing for their full projects, and so the ED Subcommittee asked them to bring that forward. And if they, if they brought that forward, then we could proceed with their application. So on April third, the ED Subcommittee was informed that the well had extended their contracted date on the purchase agreement for the Northern Hills property. They produced an agreement and that indicated the proof of financing for the gap funds that was needed for the purchase. The well provided a budget which showed working capital throughout the first three years of the project to be covered by some of their other well programs. And so since the well board had not yet approved that budget that was presented to the ED Subcommittee, the Subcommittee requested that well representatives attend the next Subcommittee meeting alongside some of their board members to talk through that and what that looked like. So on April seventeenth, the ED Subcommittee met with the well executive director, Donnie Larson, their childcare director, Cara Cratcheville, and well board members, Jody Ashoff and Cheryl Tim. So the well representatives at that meeting shared an updated plan with services for up to one hundred and twenty-seven children and up to twenty-six staff members representing both full and part-time employees. The well board representatives present indicated they had reviewed and approved the proposed budget for the childcare centered. And after the discussion, the ED Subcommittee voted unanimously to allow the LB eight forty application for Women's Empowering Lifeline to proceed to this body for full consideration. So what we're proposing here is to provide a hundred and three thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and ten cents, which is the end of it, right Randy? Towards this four hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase of the property located at six hundred North Twelfth Street here in Norfolk. And that is to establish a childcare center that will be open and accessible to the general public to be operated by Women's Empowering Lifeline. The loan will be, will bear an interest rate of four percent and ninety-nine percent of the loan to be forgiven if the job creation of eleven new full-time equivalent jobs paying at least an average of, average wage of fifteen dollars per hour during the two-year retention periods are met. So that is what we've outlined and what is being proposed this evening. And I'm happy to step back and let the well representatives come forward unless you have immediate questions for me at this time.
I do have one question. Do you have any other current applicants?
I have no other applications on file at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any more inquire, Candace, about this money?
Yes, we have had several inquiries over the past couple months.
Did you just say you're not taking any more applications, though?
We are receiving applications.
Okay.
You've had inquiries, but you've not received any other applications, right?
No.
Okay.
Not to, not to this date.
Is there a deadline on the applications and?
No, it's open, open application until the funds are officially voted on by this body. So the process is the city staff receives applications and then we review them. And once we feel that the application's ready to proceed as a staff, we bring that forward to the Economic Development Subcommittee for consideration. And then they vote to bring it forward to this body. So we have had applications that have come forward to the ED Subcommittee in the past that maybe didn't have any kind of job creation or substantial economic impact to the community that have actually been voted down and not proceeded to this full body. So the, the process, I think, that's the process that we typically follow and that's been in place since I've been here and so.
Out of all the applications, you have two right now on file?
We have one.
Just one?
Yes.
Okay.
We have one application and this, the, the funds for this need to be allocated by September of this year.
I thought you said we had another application behind this one for the same property.
There is someone who has indicated they would submit an application. But we don't have any applications, so, does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Candace. Okay. Any public input on this, please? Good evening.
I'm the executive director at Women's Empowering Lifeline here in Norfolk. I have served as the executive director for close to eight years now, and I've been privileged to be able to see the growth that we've done in this organization, to be able to serve the community and the behavioral health needs of the Norfolk and surrounding areas. So first, I want to share that our collective team has spent a lot of time and energy gathering information, supporting studies and statistics, and testimony from experts in their field that pertain to our city's childcare shortage. Investing in early childcare development has a huge impact on how our community will continue to shape and grow. You will hear from our team members, experts that are sharing their experience and how this issue impacts their roles, and several letters of support from community agency leaders who could not be here with us tonight. You will hear about our program, features and philosophy we have in building a place that parents can rely on and a place where kids are met with support and care. And you will also hear about the passion that we have surrounding this issue. So the first letter I have to share for you tonight is from Melinda Lowe. She is the Director of Network Services at Region Four Behavioral Health System. To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter in support of a much-needed childcare center in our community. My experience working with the well has been positive. They've effectively responded to and anticipated the needs of the people they serve. As a concerned citizen and a parent, I understand the challenges working parents face while balancing their professional and personal lives. It is well-known that most working parents struggle to find reliable and affordable childcare options that suit their schedules. The COVID-nineteen pandemic has only exacerbated the situation, leaving many parents without a viable option for their children's care. This childcare center would provide children with a safe and nurturing environment while their parents work. What sets the well apart from other childcare centers is its behavioral healthcare expertise. They would provide early intervention, which can greatly improve the child's quality of life and reduce the risk of more serious problems later on. Early intervention also means that parents and caregivers can be better equipped to support and care for the child as they will be more aware of their needs and challenges. Moreover, this childcare center would be a boon for single parents working odd hours to support their families. It would also create job opportunities for those interested in working in the childcare industry. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Melinda Lowe. This next one is from Ingrid Ganzabom, and she is the Region Four Behavioral Health System Regional Administrator. City Council members, I am writing in support of the Women's Empowering Lifeline, the well providing a childcare center in our community. The shortage of childcare is a widespread issue in rural Nebraska. Neighboring communities are also looking for ways to expand childcare offerings. This addition would not only be of value to Norfolk, but the surrounding areas. Region Four Behavioral Health System has contracted with Women's Empowering Lifeline for over twenty years. In this time, they have shown initiative and responsiveness to the needs of the region and the community. The well had mainly focused their services through the years to include dual diagnosis, intermediate residential, community support, peer support, and outpatient services for women. Two years ago, when the need arose for a men's dual diagnosis program, the well stepped up to the plate, responded to our request. up to the plate, responded to our request for proposal, was awarded and expanded to include a dual program for men. This past year, when we issued an RFP for a crisis response team, the well again, seeing the need in the community, stepped up to the plate and responded to the RFP and was awarded and became one of two crisis response team providers in our region. These expansions have proved successful and have been well received. The well has now seen a need for childcare center in Norfolk. Their expertise in behavioral health can only enhance the care that can be provided at the center. Thank you for your time, Ingrid Ganzabon. And then my last letter is from Jessica Mulberry, who will actually be the counselor that we will have located onsite at the childcare center. She is currently in Lincoln or Omaha, I can't remember which one, getting trained in CPP, child parent psychotherapy. So that seemed to be a high priority for her time. To whom it may concern, my name is Jessica Mulberry and I am a licensed independent mental health practitioner, LIMHP, at the Women's Empowering Lifeline, the well in Norfolk, Nebraska. I am writing as an employee of the well and in support of the exciting, positive, and progressive changes the well is looking to make in this community in the areas of services for children, adolescents, and families in the next few months and years to come. I work at the outpatient services building for the well and my primary focus is working with children, teenagers, and families. With the great changes in services the well is hoping to provide, I will be moving my main office to the childcare building. This enables me to not only be of a support for the children and staff for the childcare services, but to also be able to fully do the work I'm passionate about bringing to this community in a space that is oriented to child adolescent and familial needs. This center would open up and assist in providing services that each of these populations need. Due to the current outpatient building being a space for all different ages and groups, this at times can hinder me in creating and having a space to provide the individualized services for children. I am looking to provide support and services with these three populations due to the following reasons. It is well known in research that children communicate through play. A space to provide this as well as to teach parents how to provide this in the home is vital for long-term sustainable, healthy developmental growth in children. Adolescents can participate in narrative and talk therapy. However, studies have shown that they also need a communication avenue through art, music, exercise, movement that can assist them in their communication and organize everything they need to walk through in therapy.
Donnie, I'm sorry, I should have said it upfront, we do have a five-minute time limit for everyone. We've reached that time, so I'll let you just sum up and wrap up here if you if you can.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what Jess says. So Jess says that really having this location where children are be able to run and play and do all of those things that are required for all of the various types of therapy would really be very advantageous for the population we serve.
Very good. All right. Any questions for Donnie while she's here?
Regarding that.
Yes.
So I know you're probably aware, but like our public schools are having trouble now with kids with behavioral health or behavior issues.
Yes.
So how's how important is it to have, I guess, you've got a director onsite or a health professional onsite to catch that in children, you know, younger than preschool? If you earlier you catch behavior problems, the easier it is to help that child?
Absolutely.
How's that?
And so in those first few years of life, the brain is growing the fastest. And so if you can detect the problems that are maybe coming up in those first few years and already work to intervene, so those are the things we talk about with early intervention, that gives us our best shot of preventing long-term problems down the road. So that means things like substance use disorders, severe and persistent mental illness, psychiatric hospitalizations, all of criminal behavior, all of those things that cost our community money and emotional investment, those things can be prevented if we can serve families and children early enough.
And some of the families that you're helping right now, would you consider some of those families that have children that could be at high risk?
Absolutely, yes. And so it's been shown that children who have experienced adversity in in their childhood, so things like parental substance use or parental mental health disorders are at higher risk for developing those also. In addition, one of the populations that we're striving to serve are going to be children who are in poverty. They are also at much higher risk of childhood adverse experiences, trauma, mental illness, substance use disorders.
Donnie, I got a I got a couple of questions. You and I have had have had different conversations through the through this process and I am I am torn. My heart goes out to the kids, my mind tells me that I need to do what's best for these for the for this taxpayer dollar which created the LB840 fund. So I just, I'm going to stick to the business side of things.
Okay.
Prior to Northern Hills closing, did you guys have, were you guys going to open a daycare prior to Northern Hills closing?
Yes, it was in our strategic plan in 2020.
And the purchase, the property you were going to purchase was?
We didn't have one. We'd been looking since then.
Okay. I guess this is, if this purchases is, if this property is purchased, is this being being a nonprofit as well, being a nonprofit, are you guys anticipating and filing a property tax waiver where the property tax is not paid on this property at 600 North 12th Street?
Yes, we will.
You will you will you will file the waiver?
File a waiver, yes.
So you will not pay taxes on this property?
That is correct. So I did a little bit of research on that and and looked into why nonprofits are tax exempt because I didn't actually know. And nonprofits are tax exempt because they engage in public or private interests without a goal of monetary profits. And so the reason that Women's Empowering Lifeline is nonprofit is because none of us are profiting from this. So we are asking for an investment from the city of Norfolk, but this is a permanent investment because the well's childcare program is going to be there after me, it's going to be there after Cara, it's going to be there after all of us in the room or no longer in our seats anymore because the nonprofit organization is not dependent on one person. It will continue to go on and on and on. And there is no part of this money that can be used to line my pockets or make me rich, you know?
Right.
Because it all gets back invested back into our community.
Okay. So I I guess I'm going to say a couple of things if if that's going to be filed on this property at 600 North 12th Street is that the, and I went to the Master County GIS website today and the total of value on the tax rolls right now is $327,000 or $327,211. So I don't know where your valuation of two of 450,000 comes from. So that kind of bothers me is that that's that's almost $125,000 from what the tax rule has it to what it's valued at. I don't understand where the gap there is. I know there should be some gap, I'm not saying, but that's a that's a huge gap from what's on the tax rolls to what's being presented for us today. So that I have a little issue with. The other one is, we sit here a lot of Monday nights and we hear our, we hear from our citizens that are that that we need to do what we can to cut our taxes and and spend more wisely. And I'm on board with that. But when we start take, if granted, and I just used a round number of 100,000. If we if we take this off the tax rules and 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 this is a general comment, if we take these off the tax rules, it ends up cost, you get awarded this tonight, that ends up costing in 16.67 years, that ends up costing this community again, another 100,000 at the end of 16.67 years. I guess that kind of, no, that doesn't kind of, that bothers me is that we're asked not to raise taxes, but we're taking, but we're taking that tax away from the people, from the tax base that's already there. So I don't, I I commend what you guys do for the behavioral health and and wanting to do this. I I'm looking at this from a from a monetary standpoint of of the property itself and the taxes that's generated from the property tax at 600 North 12th Street.
Sure.
So I, yeah, so I've had a real problem. I've really went through a lot of, I guess, I really went through a lot of different scenarios. What's what's the best thing to do? So I appreciate you answering those questions that I had. So, thank you.
Absolutely. And I'll add to, you know, we have had discussions about how it is not apples to apples, you know, it's because there are not property taxes directly going back into the system. That doesn't mean that we are not superseding that amount in other benefits to the community. So I mean, just keeping that in mind that there are a lot of ways that nonprofit organizations, specifically behavioral health and early childhood prevention and intervention saves our communities tons of money later on. And I think people behind me have actual numbers to go with that. But it really is, I think, from a common sense perspective, if we invest dollars in our children, then we don't have to invest all of that money later on in in more treatment measures.
Fair point. Yeah, fair point.
Hi, strictly from a staffing standpoint.
Yes.
July 1st is what I've been told is could be a potential opening date. It gives you 60 days to staff. That seems like a very short period of time to staff this kind of facility. And from what I understand, there will be no 24-hour access to the facility, correct?
Not at this time.
Right, okay. So what is your expected staff numbers and how do you expect to attain those for all the needs of this facility?
Sure. So by the time we start in July, here just in a couple of months in the next 60 days, our plan is to have five part-time staff.
Five?
Yes. And then we'll have one full-time staff, which is Cara as the childcare director. And so we're gradually increasing our staffing over the course of the year to be able to meet the needs of the children as we gradually increase them. We know that it's not realistic to hire that many people right out of the gate and that it will take a process and and not just the hiring piece, but the training and making sure that everyone's on the same page and and we're providing quality services from the start.
There will be excitement from the community about this for child childcare. You know, so the application process, can you explain that just a little bit? From what I understand, there will be, the first priority will be from current members, is that correct?
From current mommy and me children. And so our mommy and me is a residential program where the children stay in their care with them in that program. So our priority will go to the children in that program. Cara could probably tell you how many kiddos we've gotten there right now, but I think it's probably somewhere between 10 and 12.
Okay. And the rest will be first come, first served?
Correct.
Do you have any idea how many that number, what that number will look like?
Well, by the end of the year, this coming year, we're looking at 127.
From non-members?
So 127, give or take 12, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
How long has this building been vacant?
Well, December, end of November, beginning of December, I believe, is when.
Has there been any occupancy in that meantime, meaning anybody checking the building, maintenance the building?
So that's a good question. The current owner is here tonight. We have been in there, so we've been in and doing inspections and checking on things and making sure that everything is the way that it needs to be.
So I mean, it's listed here as a turnkey business with it being vacant and we putting children in there and with all the things that you, that is listed, I'm sorry, not you, but the things that are listed here to make sure that they're working with this this building, this operation's been setting for, you know, several months and looking to revitalize this by July 1st. Again, it's very aggressive on the staffing part and it's also very aggressive on the functionality of the facility. So I guess my overall question is, 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 do we expect any extra cost in making sure that these items that are listed that are say are functioning and are in place need to be replaced? And there, is there a budget for that?
So we don't anticipate anything urgently needing to be replaced from the start. However, we also recognize that things break and especially things that are not used break. So we are aware that there is potential that we will have to invest extra dollars into making sure that the building is up and running by July and that there aren't any problem areas or anything that would be unsafe for any of the kiddos in that building.
Donnie, have you and your staff, have you gone through a due diligence process on the building right now in terms of inspections?
Yes.
I think, I won't ask a lot of questions because I think you've got others coming after you, but you've been part of the daycare effort in the community to this point. It's clear we have a shortage. Can you, can you tell us, because there's been various studies, especially with the closure of Northern Hills, what is the the current shortage, the estimated shortage in in Norfolk right now?
Estimated is 600. I've had folks question that number and I can't say that I got that number all on my own, but I do believe that there was roughly 127 children who served in Northern Hills childcare, so I think those children did not just get absorbed. I would say at a minimum, it was those kids that served childcare.
Are there any other daycare providers in the community offering the specific behavioral health services that that well provides?
Not that I am aware.
Okay. And for your employees, you set up to 26 full-time, is that or max capacity?
26 jobs total, so we end up being 13 full-time and 13.
Okay. Okay. And you do, one of the requirements of 840 is there's a minimum per hour wage on those jobs, right, of 15, I think Candace laid that out. You will pay payroll taxes and such things on those jobs. Yeah. Okay, all right. Any other questions for Donnie while she's here?
As it relates to daycare, I never considered daycare an economic development tool before until just recently. Do you know what, any sort of stats that are out there when you're of, how many families enter back into the workforce or are out of the workforce just because of the fact they can't find adequate daycare?
I don't know that we have this to discuss on that, do we?
So LB840, obviously, when we, when it was passed 10 years ago, was passed for job creation, obviously, that's what was essentially done. The citizens of Norfolk agreed to a tax increase, the ones that voted in favor of it for a job creation bill, and that's what it was. And to the tune of 400,000 a year, that's what the city received over a course of 10 years. The bulk of those funds went to the gas line that comes into property on the east side of town. That business obviously didn't ever go about, but we did, we did move a gas line into our community that was greatly needed. The rest of those, I think we've had two other applicants over the course of 10 years that qualified for the funds. And that was early on, so we don't get a lot of applicants for these funds. But with that being said, this being a job placement or a job growth bill, LB840 and the LB840 funds, that's where my question comes from. What does it mean to a community when you are short on daycare or you're light on daycare and you have more people that can access daycare? Does that create a significant amount of jobs or or is it more of a, they're just not in work and they're not going back to work?
Yeah. So I think, you know, I think you bring up a good point that we don't always think about with childcare. So we're looking at directly developing 26 jobs in this program, but if we're serving 127 children and let's assume that, you know, there's two kiddos per household, then in theory, there are over 60 parents now who are able to go back into the workforce if they haven't before or be able to be more engaged in the workforce because they are confident that they have quality childcare, that that their kids are in a safe, supportive, nurturing environment, that it opens up more than just the jobs directly that we're providing, but gives people the support that so that they can go back to work.
So I'm assuming this probably affects women more than men, obviously, when it comes to daycare. So you're getting more, essentially more women back in the workforce?
Absolutely. And I would say that the vast majority of people who work in the childcare field are also women, so it is right in line with our current mission of empowering women and family.
In your mommy and me program, are are women able to be employed during that programming?
They are toward the end of the program.
Okay, so, all right. And without daycare services, that would not be possible.
Correct.
All right.
I do have a question, just to follow up on the employees. So we heard one letter tonight about a current employee going over and working at the new facility, correct? How many do you have currently employed that you intend to move over there?
That we intend to move over right now is just one.
Just one?
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking here, it says 11 new full-time equivalent jobs. And on your budget, you've got 12 full-time June of 2024.
Correct.
So 11 full-time equivalent jobs. How how many part-time jobs are you anticipating to equal one full-time?
So we'll have 13 part-time and we figured two part-time for every one FTE. So we'll have thirteen part-time, and we figured two part-time for every one FTE.
One what?
For every one.
Full-time employee, you're figuring what?
Two part-time for every.
Two, two part-time?
So two part-time employees equal one full-time equivalent.
I was trying to figure out if you were doing two or three.
Oh, sure.
Part-time to, okay. So a lot of this is, um, a lot of your children are going to be funded, right, through like a Medicaid funding, is that correct?
So we are estimating that seventy-five percent will be state subsidized childcare kiddos.
And is that, is that state subsidy, is that coming more from the Medicaid side of things, do you know?
So Medicaid is a different pool of money, um, than the childcare state subsidy dollars. Um, and I know, you know, Cara will talk about it a little bit later, but for someone to qualify for the state subsidy childcare, they have to be at a, a one hundred and eighty-five percent of poverty. So right now in the Norfolk community, roughly twenty-five percent of our kids are at poverty. So at a hundred and eighty-five percent of poverty, we can guess that it's going to be close to fifty percent of kids in the Norfolk community qualify for state subsidy for childcare. And for a parent to get state subsidy, they have to either be working, going to school, or participating in like a vocational program. And if it's a two-parent household, then both parents have to be working at the same time or going to school at the same time to be eligible for the childcare subsidy. So people aren't able to access the childcare subsidy unless they are working in, or in school.
You're anticipating seventy-five percent of your budget is going to be funded from there?
Yes, with the childcare subsidy. So it's, it's, um, in essence, the, the family will, um, apply through the state of Nebraska to see if they qualify for childcare subsidy. And if they qualify for it, then they come and, you know, apply for, um, or put in an application to be able to get their kiddo in our program. And so we get the kiddo in our program, we verify that they have childcare subsidy assistance, and then we bill the state of Nebraska. As they work, then, and they get above that one hundred and eighty-five percent of poverty level, then they are no longer eligible for the childcare subsidy and they have to pay on their own.
So would that child have preference over somebody that did not have subsidized?
No, no, we expect that we'll have seventy-five percent just because, um, not all childcare programs take state subsidized kiddos. So based on our count, we had fifty-eight licensed either childcare centers or in-home providers in the Norfolk area. And it was sixty-four percent take state subsidy, thirty-six percent do not. So, um, a child who does not receive state subsidy or a child who is not in poverty, um, has thirty-six percent more options for childcare in the Norfolk community right now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you fully staffed at the well right now?
Pretty darn close. We have two part-time recovery coach positions.
So you're not fully staffed?
It depends on how you phrase it. So we currently are hiring for two part-time recovery coach staff. However, we have ten PRN staff that cover those open shifts. So if, if we take those PRN staff into consideration, so PRN is a term that we use for as needed, so they're, they help out when they can, they, you know, pick up shifts when they can when people are on vacation or people are sick or things like that. Um, so if we take the PRN staff into consideration, we are fully staffed.
I just, I, I know I've talked to you in depth about it, and I'm with Cory, I just can't. Since this building was bought by Mike, this whole thing's just been about how do we, as a community, the whole focus has been around this property. I feel like our economic development has been working around how do we get this property sold? And I don't think that the application process, um, has been fair and equitable. I don't feel the, the, just coming in, buying the daycare and shutting it down, and then coming to the taxpayer and asking for a hundred thousand dollars to make the deal work is fair. And then take it off the tax rolls, um, off a tax that was created off property tax. I'm all about your movement, what you're doing, your, your nonprofit. But I think we're a little, I'm a little, uh, I'm a little tied up in this because, um, when the daycare was shut down and a price was given for that daycare, I don't know what supports that price. And I know the daycare was profitable when it was shut down. And so that's my concern, is staffing, using tax dollars, um, to take a, a building off, off the tax rolls. It was a tax that was created off property tax. On top of that, the purchase price of that daycare doesn't come close to what the, the original owners paid for it. And it doesn't come close to the tax amount. And I feel like you're kind of getting wrapped up in all this just because, um, the emotion around this daycare being shut down in our community. And we had a daycare issue when this daycare was rolling.
Absolutely.
And we're going to have it after you're there. And I feel like this is kind of taking the narrative of the daycare issue and turned it towards this property, when the daycare narrative should be more of a community and not surrounded this property. And so I apologize that you guys have been wrapped up in that. Because I think your intentions are really good, and I think what you're doing is good. But I just feel like these tax funds should not be used for that. I feel like we should not use these funds to take the property back off the tax rolls. I don't know why the process and selling the property seem like, no, no one put a for sale sign in the yard. It's always been, hey, you know, like backroom deals. So that's why I don't, I won't support it, so.
To piggy up, big off, back off that a little bit, I have an email saying the well's investing two hundred and thirty-five thousand potentially in this prop, this property. Could that be used in a different property? We talked about staffing, it's going to be tough. Uh, you're talking about starting small staffing. Why not start a small and different property, you know, as well? I noticed that at least a few of the properties, even it was, I think, at least one for Sheraton Ward four, um, that's vacant. So, um, not to, you know, as far as the property and, and all of that, you know, I don't, my concern is staffing and, and giving this money and then, you know, looking back and saying, you know, what happened? Because it didn't work, you know, so you're talking about starting small on staffing. Is there a potential to start small on a different property to where you don't need the hundred thousand?
I understand your perspective. Um, there is another property that has a childcare, that was licensed as a childcare. Um, that property has no parking. There is not a gymnasium or a big outdoor space. With the children that we serve, it is especially important that we have adequate space for them uh, to be able to have, for them to feel safe and comfortable in that environment. So one of the pieces about having a trauma-informed, um, facility is that we really need for the children to be able to have some choice and some, um, distance and a place to run off their energy or their, their trauma triggers or things like that when the weather is bad and when it's below zero and all of those kinds of things.
That's fair.
Yeah, unique piece to that building. I will say, I know you are worried about our staffing, I am not worried about our staff.
You're not worried at all?
I am not worried about our staff.
Wow.
That's why it's sold.
Well, I, I guess, look, I, I mean, no matter what you guys do, I'm rooting for you. I mean, I think, uh, you know, no matter what happens, you're doing a great thing, so, um, my mind's not made up. I, I'm still sitting here tonight trying to decide how to vote. So I appreciate what you're doing, you know, just the questions are just, you know, strict, strictly operational, so.
Absolutely, I get it. And I'll say too, for Councilman Webb, um, I, I feel what you're saying about it not being fair um, and, and how maybe the process wasn't great, or there's some contention with the building. I don't think it's fair to have a hundred and twenty-seven kids without childcare, that we could be up and running as soon as July because of some of whatever the background is or some of the, um, just contention surrounding this property. I think this is a, this is a great property, it's a huge building, lots of space. There's playgrounds, there's gymnasiums, there, you know, there's all of these things for the children that we serve. And, and I hate to take that away from them because we don't like the way that this happened, you know?
Well, my biggest thing is that we're using a hundred thousand dollars to subsidize this. So someone buys it, comes in, buys a daycare that's operational, they shut it down for a plan that they had.
Sure.
It was serving a hundred and fifty kids, I think.
Yeah.
And then they come to the community and say, hey, I gave four hundred and fifty for this building. I'm going to need a hundred thousand of your tax, the city of Norfolk, I'll need a hundred thousand dollars of your money to get this thing back going again. I shouldn't have bought it for this purpose. It didn't work out. So it helped me float this show, guys, and give me a hundred thousand. And then take it off the tax rolls, and every ten years it's going to cost sixty thousand dollars to do that. And that goes into our public school system.
With all due respect, Councilman, I don't think that's Donnie's, any of that is Donnie's issue. She's, she's here to advocate for the application that she's made for the purpose that well is trying to serve here. You're bringing in a lot of this that does not concern her.
Yeah, I'm telling you why I'm not supporting it.
Well, I hope, um, as, you know, we, other folks come up and speak, that if you're, you have those feelings that you keep kind of an open mind about the work that we're doing and remembering that, um, this is going to serve the community that we are all in. You know, I was born in Norfolk, my children were born in Norfolk. I am passionate about this community and what we do here. And I'm going to do everything that I can that is in with, within my power to better serve this community in the gaps that I see. And right now, the gap I see is childcare and behavioral health services for the littlest of the littles. And so I want to step in and do that, and I would take any partnership that the city would be willing to offer.
Thank you, Donnie. And ju- just one, one more thing. Your organization is, was established in Norfolk when?
In nineteen ninety-one.
And you started with how many employees?
Oh, gosh, when they started, I, in nineteen ninety-one, I don't know, it was a halfway house for women, so we probably had five.
Okay.
When I started seven years ago, I think we had eighteen staff, and today we have eighty.
You have eighty staff in Norfolk today?
Correct.
Okay. I don't think that's fully realized by the community, external, the services that you provide. Um, and we do appreciate, uh, your engagement in childcare. And again, you were, you have been providing childcare services, and the organization was exploring expanded childcare services prior to any of this Northern Hill properties being, coming onto the market, correct?
It's been established.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. All right, thank you, Donnie.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other public input, please?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kyle Fuickman, I'm a certified financial planner here with Coldwater Financial Group. Uh, I actually only live two blocks away from, uh, Northern Hills. So I guess my question with the reservations that everyone's having with this building, if it's not us, then, then who? I mean, is that building just going to continue to sit empty and be an eyesore in the community? So I see we've got an empty building, number one. And just like you mentioned earlier, the longer that, that every single month that goes by with that building is just going to continue to get worse and worse, as any unused property, uh, does from that instance. So that, that would be, if you're having reservations, I mean, if it's not us, then who? Is someone going to go and take their private funds and go and start up a daycare? Like who, how are we going to solve this daycare issue in Norfolk?
Well, empty buildings are all over town.
Yeah, I know.
Not just two blocks from your home.
I know, I know.
Thank you.
But I'm just saying.
And it was empty when, uh, Sedback's bought it too.
Yeah, it was.
He went on the free.
They got a really, really good deal on it.
Not really, it's a lot of overhead.
It's a lot of overhead, but then they had an offer that they cannot refuse.
So it wasn't operating as a daycare when it was sold?
It was a school.
No, I thought you meant, uh, when Sedback's bought it, okay, not, not, uh, in the most recent purchase, okay.
You got it.
So I just think, I mean, from, for the city, who, who is going to come in and, and solve this, this daycare issue that we have? Is someone going to take private funds out of their own pocket and start a daycare?
That's what happened the first time.
So how long is that going to be? Is that going to be, is it going to be a month? Is it going to be six months? Is it going to be a year? So again, I mean, we have, we have a problem, we're presenting a solution to the problem, uh, from that standpoint.
Kyle, I'm going to, I'm going to, I've had four daycare providers reach out to me. They all want to expand. Every one of them wants to expand. Yeah, are they going to do it on their own dime, in their own in-home? Absolutely.
An in-home daycare?
An in-home daycare. The problem is, is that, one, they have a staffing issue. And that's their number one concern, is their staffing issue. If I get somebody hired, will they stick around? The second problem is, is that I can only, as a single person in in-home daycare, you can only have one, you can have one person per eight children. Okay, so I add another staff, because of the restrictions that the state puts on those providers, I can only have twelve. Is there, is there a daycare issue without a question? But because we can't expand our daycares and our in-home daycares, I think that's a, that, that is something that's out of your guys' hands, it's out of our hands. I think that's at the state level and a state issue, that they need to revisit the staff, the, I'm sorry, they need to revisit the, the childcare shortage. So are people, so, so your question was, are people going to, um, do they want to do this with their own money? Yeah, they do. I've, I, I, I know of two of the four that have tried to buy properties to put daycares in and cannot get it done. And not because of financially, it's because, uh, the restrictions the state has, and maybe it's a fire marshal, you know, maybe it's the, the number of, 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 uh, pupils they can have, so, yeah.
Well, I just, like I said, I came up here, I've been on the board, if I can advocate for the well, I've been a board member for the last, uh, two years. You know, as our name implies, we started, just like Donnie said, serving women in our community. And, uh, since then, we started our men's program. So we are also going through tremendous growth, like Donnie said, we are going through a rebranding, more than likely are, will not be the well, uh, next year at this time because of the expanded services, uh, that we're offering from that standpoint. I will say, uh, being on, again, being on the board, Donnie is an absolute rock star. I mean, she, if she ever decided to leave the public sector, I told her that we would more than likely hire her in the private sector. She has some very, very good talents and has extremely high capacity to take on a project like this. From there, uh, you know, you know, five, you know, five oh one C is, three is not easy whatsoever. I mean, we're, you know, operate off grants, fundraising. So I think that's why we're asking this for these dollars. And just like Donnie said, as an organization, this isn't a private thing where this is going to continue to operate for years to come and moving into the future. So I just wanted to stand up here as a member of the community, as a board member for the last two years. And again, we all know that we have that, that daycare shortage, and it's just, yeah, what is that solution, uh, from there? I'm going to advocate for the well, obviously, since I'm on the board for it. We have a shortage, we have a need, and do we want to pay four hundred and fifty thousand for that building? No.
I don't blame you.
No, we don't, but if there's a need, so, you know, if it doesn't happen, then unfortunately, that four hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment is just going to continue to sit there empty.
Okay, that's one question I had throughout this process. As a, as a board member, um, can you tell me whether the board, I, I have the indication that they are, but was there much discussion on this? How, how much support, is the, the board fully supportive of taking on this endeavor? Or none, none of us is naive to the fact that this is a big lift, right, financially and otherwise? So I would imagine there's a commitment there beyond this one-time assistance, because it's not like you're coming, you, you think that you're going to come back again, right? You get one bite at the apple.
Hundred percent. I mean, we've had tons and tons of meetings about this. I mean, spent a lot of board time discussing this. From that standpoint, just exactly the same, hey, how are we going to staff this? There's going to be some tremendous growth, we're going to have to start out smaller. And we fully understand, like, hey, we, we got one go at this. If we're going to do it right, if you look at any other program that we've ever started in the community, we've started a lot of different programs and invested funds into those programs. Some of them instantly, you know, we could cash flow and some we couldn't. And this is, we, we know that this isn't something that's going to cash flow positive right away.
Kyle, Kyle, I do have a question for you. So if these funds did not come available to you this evening, would you still move forward with opening a daycare?
On that same, is there any financial institution willing to back this at all? To, you know, bank or, you're in the financial business, right? Is there any, you know, bank, I mean, every small business gets a SBA loan, I got one, one time, yeah, one point. You know, with a good business plan, it's potential that, that could happen. Um, has that been approached at all, as a board member? I mean, you're not, obviously, a support member, but.
It has not.
Yeah. It has not been approached?
No.
When you look at the childcare landscape across the community, yes, there's, there's several, um, private, uh, for-profit daycares. I think it's also accurate to say they're, they're smaller. Um, and the larger childcare centers that we see are typically associated with churches or other nonprofit entities that see, that service that they're offering as, um... or other nonprofit entities that see that service that they're offering as a mission, a unique mission, that they want to provide for kids throughout the community. I see this in a similar vein.
Kyle, you guys have a bank that you're going through? Local bank, or?
Who's the bank? That's just carrying this loan. That's just carrying the, of course, I'm just just banking Madison County.
Any other questions for Kyle? Thank you for being here.
Jim McKenzie. The city just gave away in the past month, two million dollars of TIF money, which is deferred tax dollars, and gave a city property worth approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one dollar to a multimillion dollar corporation to establish a boutique downtown hotel. How do we justify this and deny a minimal hundred thousand dollar request of designated LB-840 funds for something like this? This is a much better use of already designated set aside exclusively for economic development, LB-840 funds. Wells supplied for these funds just like any other entity could, but they did it. This project creates jobs, it's economic development, meets the requirements of the LB-840 plan, and it meets a critical community need for childcare. In my opinion, this is an excellent use of the minimal amount of funds that are being asked for this project, and it is a great, a great use, so.
Add to that, Jim, LB-840 funds are, they're not forgivable, or they are forgivable, but you essentially have to be, do what you're entitled to do.
Create the jobs.
Or you have to, the money has to come back to the city. Am I right on that, Randy?
That's correct.
It's a forgivable loan, and we keep saying we're giving them, it's a forgivable loan.
I understand the consternation about the building and all that issue, and I think that's been rambling around the community a lot, and I totally understand that, I get it, but-
Jim, what do you say about the boutique hotel where we put it back on the tax rules?
Fifteen years.
No, we just put that back on the tax rules now, and Ho-Chuck bought it.
But a tiny amount, you're not gonna get any taxes for fifteen years on that.
But it goes on the property tax right away.
Tiny, tiny amount.
Absolutely, but it's, we don't have anything right now. Here, you're taking someone totally off the property tax.
But that's such a minimal amount, compare that to the basically three million bucks that you gave to a multimillion dollar corporation.
The Ho-Chuck's creating.
Pardon?
Look at the sales tax that hotel's creating, look at the property tax it's creating.
The jobs that this thing is creating, they're gonna be sales tax related, those jobs as well.
So we just take the money and throw it away and say, hey, that six thousand dollars a year, we don't need for this people?
I think that's, you know, you look at the need for, I'm, I'm normally against giving tax dollars out to private entities, you know, you and I are on the same page. You're on the same page on that, but in this case, those are LB-840 dollars, you've already given them away. I mean, you've said, we're gonna give this away to somebody, they're gone, you're gonna give them to somebody, you have to by the end of this calendar year, I think, so. I don't think you can, you've already set them aside for economic development. I think they're gone, you're gonna give them to somebody. So who are you gonna give them to? You're gonna give them to these guys that are gonna create jobs and serve an extremely important community need, or are you just gonna find somebody else to give them to?
And serve a very vulnerable part of our population.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Well said, Jim, you don't hear me say that often, well said.
I think we gotta remember, this was a school that didn't pay property tax before it got-
Right.
But what better building to look at? You mean, it once was a school.
It's equipped as a school.
Hello, everybody, I am here to speak on behalf of community agency leaders that are in support of the allocation of funds to the well and to address the childcare shortage. The first one I have, I'm sure for those that have been familiar with the initiative going on, Tammy Day, I'm sure of you heard about her and what her plan is. She's in support, and here is her letter. I'm writing to support the well's effort to reopen Northern Hills Childcare Center. As you know, Madison County has a capacity gap in quality childcare, making it difficult for employers to hire and retain the needed workers. To create a thriving community where people want to live, work, and raise families, we must find creative and innovative ways to solve this childcare issue. Some creative efforts are already underway to increase quality childcare capacity, such as the Norfolk Family Coalition's grant program to provide financial support to people wanting to become in-home providers. So to address you, Councilman Corey, is there are grants available to in-home that they can go forward with that? And as you know, the business community is working on another initiative that involves forming a 501(c)(3) childcare cooperative that will operate several childcare microcenters across our community, but more is needed. The well's effort to reopen Northern Hills Childcare Center is another critical piece of creating additional capacity and chipping away at our community's childcare problem. The closing of Northern Hills exacerbated an already complex problem for the Norfolk area. Finding a way to reopen those slots is a significant step forward and allows us to quickly reset to a lower capacity gap number. Thank you for your support of our community's various efforts to prioritize early childhood education and solve our childcare capacity problem. The next one that I am reading is going to be Leonora Fuer. She is the Assistant Vice President of the Community Response at Nebraska Children and Families Foundation. I'm writing this letter in support of the well and opening up a much-needed quality childcare program to help address the crisis our community is currently facing. I have spoken with a member of the well and discussed the benefits that this childcare program will provide our community. By focusing on children's behavioral, emotional, and social well-being, this program will benefit our children in ensuring they are well-prepared to enter school, as well as setting them up to the foundational skill sets well into the future, ultimately benefiting our future workforce and community. Investing in this endeavor will help, not only help offer quality care for our child, but will also lead to an increase in our community well-being. I'm asking you to strongly consider supporting this initiative in order to help our community flourish and young families thrive. My final is from Angie Stanger, the Executive Director of Growing Together Northeast Nebraska. Quality early childhood education is a big part of how our community thrives. Skilled early childhood educators prepare children for school. Families can work knowing their children are in the safe, loving, and supportive care of a quality early childhood educator, and that provides area employees with the talent they need to succeed now and in the future. Over four years ago, a team of community leaders came together to create a strategy to ensure our area, our area of the state finds a means to grow and address population decline with an effort to attract young people. That plan, known as Growing Together in Nebraska, an exorbitant workforce initiative, identified early childhood education as one of the six core components. Families with two working parents are not likely to live in an area without excellent daycare. How a community supports the development of its youngest children is directly related to its ability to attract and anchor young parents, strengthen its current and future talent pool, increase workplace productivity, and create social and economic opportunity on a broad scale. Given the urgency of cultivating and anchoring young families and talent in Northeast Nebraska, Growing Together has been a table that the community has discussed the shortage in childcare in our community and explored what happens throughout Nebraska. We have learned that communities are addressing these issues by building cross-sector partnerships that involve local businesses, industry, nonprofits, and among others. Many communities have found ways to repurpose existing buildings as suitable spaces for the care and education of young children. Building robust early childhood care and education systems can do much to address the most urgent present-day challenges to the sustainability of Northeast Nebraska and its community. Ultimately, investments in the development of young children represent a long-term strategy for building a talent pipeline that will deliver a more productive workforce, cohesive communities, and a stronger Northeast Nebraska. Growing Together is in support of any and all efforts that have been introduced to increase affordable, quality childcare in our community. Then there's a couple of things I noticed, I took notes, that I want to kind of go over. Some of the things that were talked about were, you know, how long this is-
Time, time, we are at five, so if you can, if you can sum up just quickly.
Yes. Okay, let me do this. I will point out, the city signed off more than this dollar amount for tax dollars to fund the bus transportation system. There are additional things, as far as GIS, it's only ninety percent of the property's valuation, and that was determined in September of twenty twenty-two. The aggressiveness of us to open is to care for our community. We are losing people. If we don't do something now, it's been open for ten years to apply for these funds. We took that initiative, so when it was brought up about however many people are gonna go do this, they've had over ten years. Because we applied for it, now that gets brought up? Let's be a community that steps forward and helps our community and be one of the first ones. Not doing second guessing and getting rid of, you know, losing people and losing families, be a leader, be Norfolk. Thank you.
What was your first name? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Sasha.
Sasha, I got, I got a couple of follow-up questions for you then, okay, from the first letter you read from. If our large employers understand daycare is an issue, then why haven't they got and stepped up to the plate to purchase a building or to do the daycare thing?
I think you would have to ask those companies.
Okay, so, so we're throwing manufacturers, we're throwing industry, we're throwing employers in here, but we, we're using them as a scapegoat, but we don't have anything to back that up, that they want to or they're wanting to do this. So that kind of throws me off a little bit, because I'm a hundred percent on the day, having daycare. There, there's some internal business components of this that bother me, okay? So for you guys, then, how'd your fundraising go to, to, to raise money for the down payment of this building?
I would not have answers to that, I would have to leave that, and I think maybe later on, we'll talk about that, as far as that stuff, that is not my part. My part in this is finding community involvement from agencies that are in support of this to demonstrate to the city council.
Okay, so, so that's your job, so you went knocking on these employers' doors that were stated in that first letter? And their support was?
So what, if part of the childcare initiative that's going on at the Chamber, we are part of that, so I would encourage you, if you haven't been part of that, to go see, because that's where the employees are at, that's where we're talking. So I would encourage you to reach out and participate in those, actually, the next one is this Thursday at three, to find out from, like you said, manufacturers, businesses, please feel free to see where they're at. This is just where we're at and what we're doing for our community right now.
I, I will add, because I've been part of some of those discussions, and you, you brought Tammy Day's letter forward, that that discussion originated from those, from those meetings, from those task force meetings that have been held since late, late last year, early this year. And so that collaborative model that Tammy is referring to and working on does bring in industry and business support for this, because they recognize that this has become an employee recruitment and retention liability for them, not having childcare capacity within the community.
So why are we having two organizations butt heads instead of working together?
We are, we are working together.
They're gonna use the same facility?
Which is why Tammy Day submitted this letter in support of this proposal.
Will they use the same facility?
No, they are doing their own, that's something that Tammy Day, if you wanted to address her, the way that I'm just reading based off the letter. She does mic, the, how did she say it, micro? I can't remember, sorry, guys, give me a second.
Their model is, is built on smaller centers spread throughout the community, some even onsite at businesses.
And they're currently working on that. It's a broad scope here, we're talking about, this, this is just part of the plan, and then they're working on other plans to address, you know.
It's also worth noting, this is a multifaceted approach, and again, I'm gonna use this opportunity because you brought it up, Leonora Fuer and the Family Coalition and the grant program that they oversee does provide some of those grants that, Corey, you were talking about before. And we have, we've had this discussion internally, I think another opportunity for the city to potentially contribute is to help create a one-time grant program that's accessible to providers of all sizes based on demonstrated capacity.
We're talking about two separate things now. We're talking about a, a grant-funded program for many daycares, or we're talking about LB-840 funds.
Yeah, right, right, so.
So let's, so-
Well, let's talk about LB-840 funds, because we are getting off the subject of LB-840. I don't, we're asking questions, in my opinion, that have nothing to do with LB-840. Is LB-840 a job growth bill or a created job, that's what it was created for, to create in jobs? And that's what we have to talk about. Are you gonna create jobs?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, that qualifies for LB-840, that's one of, that's one of the things you asked about.
Andy.
To go into all their business about everything else is asking way-
Excuse me, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, you're getting, we're getting so far off subject when it comes to LB-840, I don't understand. I don't understand where we're coming from with all this. It's either you're, you think they're gonna create jobs and help the community through creating jobs, or you don't. It's just that simple, I don't know what is, they, they didn't pay property tax, or they're not gonna pay, I mean, it is, that, when we, when the citizens voted for LB-840 to come in place, that's what it was done for, used for, and it was, and it hasn't, it, it's only really gone out to two other companies have taken advantage of it. And primarily because it was, it's hard to apply for, but that's what we need to stick to, that's the topic at hand.
And, yes, and like it or not, childcare has become an economic development issue.
Andy, can you tell some things we're doing differently? I talked to you on the phone, you said there's some things we're doing that's unprecedented, as far as we've never used LB-840 funds or with the social.
Sure, Councilman, so I think, you know, as I've, as I've looked at this, one of the things I, I think a lot of us are struggling with is why this is, is different than what you would see as a normal applicant. And I think it's up to our own kind of value system to decide if that's something that, that we want to support and vote on, but it is different. Normally, you wouldn't see an application like this come forward that serves, you know, is a more of a social services kind of related a business or an organization, so I think that's why we're struggling. Normally, you would see somebody that wants to do an addition, add on something and make more widgets or whatever that would be, that you would see this happen. So I think that's why we're, we're just looking, I, as I've seen it, I think that's where I've struggled, looking at this too, to try to determine if this is something that I would personally see as, as merit. And I will tell you, just some of the, the discussion that I've heard tonight, some of the, the testimony that's been given, and a lot of those that have expressed support, has kind of made me look at this a little bit different than I, than I saw that before I got here tonight. But I think I'm, I'm hearing and I'm reading and I'm, and I'm understanding some things a little bit different, so I'm eating that a little bit as I'm, as I'm sitting here. But I still think that that's why we're struggling with this as a city, because this isn't something normally that we would see as an applicant come forward due to the services you provide. So not that that doesn't mean it has, doesn't have merit. But I guess, Councilman, that's kind of my take on, on some of our conversations we've had.
Can I provide some feedback on that real quick? Is that okay? Because one of the things, what you said is services we provide, I want to make it very, very clear, the people that we serve are our community members. I think it's important to recognize and take away that stigma associated with, oh, drug addiction, mental health. They are our community members. When we start looking about, you know, no property tax, it was a school before, we do have churches that do it now. The amount of sales tax and everything else, if we have daycare available, they're gonna put that back into our city.
Thank you, thank you, Sasha.
Any school officials here tonight? Anybody here that, I'd like to, I'd like to know what the answer is to early prevention of mental issues in children, what that, you know, how that impacts our schools? Because if we're gonna talk about property tax, the bulk of the property tax goes to our schools, and they're probably, they're affected the most by that six thousand that won't be coming in per year. And if, if, if like the old saying, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, I kind of want to know what, you know, what that, what that is, or how much that could be, you know, with some potential.
Fair question.
I do have a letter from Alyssa Jans, she's the principal of Little Panthers, that I will read after my letter. Hello, I am Cara Cradville, the childcare director at the well. I've spoken in front of this city council before, so today I thought it would be beneficial to help, to give you some information on my educational experience and background in addition to some more details of our childcare program. I earned my Associate of Arts degree in early childhood education in two thousand and one. I was hired and worked at the Crisis Nursery for thirteen years with abused and neglected children until they closed in two thousand and thirteen. I've worked with the most vulnerable children in our area, most suffered unimaginable trauma at such a young age. Most people would not believe the situations I have witnessed. I've seen kids in body casts, bruised up faces that are unrecognizable, shunts in babies' heads, violent behavior due to trauma, and the list can go on. The reason I worked there was because I loved being able to teach them, be able to teach them to be children. I showed them how to do action songs, taught them to play in the mud and basic academics. Yes, you heard that right, I had to teach them to be kids. By the time I left, there were more smiles, by the time they left, there were more smiles and giggles. I would run into them in the public, and they would just laugh and say, you were the one who taught us to play in the mud. They were allowed to be children and learn, heal, and grow at the same time. After working at the Crisis Nursery, I went back to school in- After working at the Crisis Nursery, I went back to school and earned my Bachelor's of Science degree in human service counseling. I needed a break from working with the hardest cases I'm to collect. So I started working with adults with mental health and substance use issues as I know the cycle of trauma starts with the older generation. I have been ready to get back to my passion, working with children. The opportunity with the Northern Hills Biltie is exactly the kind of work I was made to do. Nobel Prize-winning economist James Heckman argued that the key to early childhood programs' long-term benefit and their effectiveness is improving not only hard skills but also soft skills. Hard skills are such as math and literacy, typically measured by standardized tests. Soft skills are character skills and social skills, including self-confidence, how someone gets along with peers, and a sort of figures, and the ability to plan. This particular important for businesses because soft skills are at least as important as hard skills in determining worker productivity, and such skills are increasingly demanded by employers. Our goal is to work with the social emotional skills to help them better interact with their peers, prioritize their academics, and help them learn their colors and numbers. And yes, parents and guardians, if you send your child to our childcare program, we will play in the mud sometimes. Kids need to get messy from time to time. They will get to be kids and do what they do best, learn through play. The WELL's team's goal is to open in July and do a steady, controlled opening. We will start with our Mommy Me clients and then open to the public in August on a first come, first served basis. Our current proposal timeline has childcare centers enrollments, numbers at 90 kids by January 2024 and 127 kids by July of 2024. Some more program details I feel are important to share with the council and the general public. We will accept children who will be covered by subsidies. According to the Center for the Study of Social Policy, children who live in poverty are 30% less likely to complete high school and 37% less likely to have a consistent job as a young adult. We want to empower these children with the tools they need to be successful in school and the workforce. This is also important because one in four, ev, one in every four children in Norfolk is living in poverty. For those who don't know, those qualifications in order to re-subsidies, they must be working and going to school. For two-parent families, both parents must be working or going to school at the same time. Those living in poverty are not the only ones affected and need extra assistance. The First Five Years Fund reported, "Early research indicates that infants and toddlers raised during the pandemic experienced delays in cognitive and motor skills, and few interactions in quality early childhood settings, and reduced language skills." We interviewed several childhood experts in our area, and there, there was a resounding yes when we asked if they've seen an impact on children since the pandemic lockdown. Ultimately, we want to assist in getting those kids back on track and another entity that supports the work of our teachers, paraprofessionals, and school staff. Staffing our own facility is another topic of importance. We need qualified staff to make this happen. We have heard of, of a misunderstanding that is being circulated that we will be hiring current WELL clients to care for the children in our program. That has never been part of the plan, nor will it be. The state of Nebraska has strict guidelines of who can work at licensed childcare that will be required to follow. Every employee be required to have background checks and complete, and completed, including fingerprinting. I am ready to hire and train staff to be the best childcare educators. The Early Childhood Education Program at Northeast does phenomenal job of training the next generation of early childhood professionals. We have in touch with the Northeast Community College Apprentice Program. We can hire staff that would normally not be, work in the field, and they can go to school and work under this program. We also plan to develop a relationship with the program at Wayne State as well. We hope to tap into young professionals' passion in education.
Kara, we're at five, so if you can, if you can sum up, please.
And, um, Melissa Jantsch kind of said the same thing, um, that they're, um, she's the principal at Little Panthers, and the importance of, since the pandemic, um, things have really changed in the behavior of children, and they really need that extra help. I do have, if you're wondering what it takes to be a childcare provider in the state of Nebraska, I do have those regulations. If anybody wants a copy, I have enough ready, so.
You can, you can leave a copy and we'll pass them down if you want to do that. Okay, thank you, Kara. Any questions for Kara? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Hello. I actually have, uh, more letters. Um, and so since our time is limited to five minutes, um, we have, um, a letter from our board president. Yes, I'm Dana Walkenfuß. Um, so I have a letter from our board president. Um, I have more copies of Melissa Jantsch's from Little Panthers. Um, I have a letter of recommendation from Tracy Olson, who worked with Kara at the Wesley Center Nursery from 1999 till 2013, and then also from Michelle Lawson, who is currently the Director of the Wesley Center Childcare and Preschool. So I don't know.
Take, pass around. Thank you.
Hello, members of our city council. I am Dana Walkenfuß. I'm the WELL's Director of Development. I live in Norfolk in Ward 3. I'm a constituent of Mr. Webb and Mr. Snorton. The last time I spoke to this council, I shared my personal experience with this issue. For those who were not in attendance, I couldn't find childcare for my infant, so I had to resign from my previous role of four and a half years to stay at home with my baby until she was 18 months. It took an additional six months for me to find a job that fit my skill set in Norfolk. My husband and I were relieved when we finally allowed ourselves to breathe a sigh of relief. It truly felt like we were finally hitting our stride, both with, with both of us working and also Collins thriving in daycare. So much so that my husband decided to apply for the open assistant principal role at the high school here. We felt prepared for that life change if given the opportunity. The same afternoon that he was asked to schedule an interview for the assistant principal position, he picked our daughter up from daycare and our in-home provider informed him she's closing May 18th. This May 18th. Cue panic. As we scrambled to text our friends and coworkers to see if they knew of anyone with an opening for a two-and-a-half-year-old, I felt so many emotions. The number one emotion was desperation. Desperation is not the feeling any parent wants to have when trying to find care for their child. That Friday, I had just met with our childcare initiative team and what we were planning on presenting tonight. I knew the exact situation that my family faced, no, because I know the data behind how many families need childcare in our area. My experience with finding care has not been an easy one. Although, I need to point out to those who do not know me, my experience is one of privilege. I'm a white female with a bachelor's degree. I have a solid partner who is supportive and has a dependable income. Both of our parents made financial decisions to set us up in life where after college we were able to save an emergency fund that got us through the years on one income. Our living situation is affordable and stable. Now having two incomes, we're able to afford higher prices of childcare. And my husband's career choice allows for us to have several months this summer where he can watch Collins while we try to secure a spot. And also, I only have one child. We're only searching for one daycare spot. I give you all of these details because all those life, all those factors are life variables that change based on the parent that you are talking to. If any one of those factors were different, unstable housing, multiple children ranging in age, inconsistent income, a single-parent household, a parent that works multiple shifts or jobs, not being able to afford the increase in cost in childcare, or not being able to find somewhere that takes state subsidies, have you considered the Norfolk citizens who are living that experience right now? Dependable, affordable childcare and lack thereof is not something that impacts only one demographic, one area of town, one type of family, or a specific range of income. It literally impacts every single person who has a child. Those are the challenges that parents in your wards face, living on your block and that the people that you see in the grocery store. I believe that any decision that is made tonight will have significant ripple impacts. On the third page of our supporting documents, you can see several different areas of economic impact investing in childcare can have on our local economy. To give a brief overview, um, based on the studies we selected, for every dollar invested in childcare, it generates $2.34 in economic activity, in higher wages, in, uh, job, uh, longevity. It saves $7 in community resources, including savings in incarceration, probation, government assistant programs, and other government-funded sources. And it can generate up to $13 in property tax, or excuse me, in property value, which would both benefit private citizens and our property tax revenue. Taking those three areas of impact alone, the 1,000, or excuse me, $103,219 of LV840 funds we are asking for could generate up to $2,319,331 of economic impact. That return on investment would be 2,147%. And that is not taking the additional funds that the WELL will continue to invest as we develop and continue this program. Numerous studies have shown investing in quality childcare has far-reaching and long-lasting benefits for both families and the economy. Common sense tells us that it is, it is an investment worth making. If we do not take action now, we risk so much more. Our most vulnerable population needs dependable childcare to allow them to focus on meeting their family needs. The WELL's timeline is aggressive, and we are willing to do the work in order to launch the program quickly. If this vote is delayed several more weeks, our estimated opening date will have to be pushed back even farther. If this vote is, is, if this is voted against, there are no other solutions that we know of with an accelerated timeline to fix this crisis. And if, if it is voted against, I would ask, what is the council's alternative plan to solve this care crisis? How will you take action to fix this? I would urge the council to consider all of this when deciding how you proceed tonight.
Thank you, Dana. Any question? I just have one. You provide a letter from Michelle Lawson. She's currently the Director of the Wesley Center?
I believe.
Childcare Center?
Yes.
So that's an operational, private childcare center that is in support of your application, even though it might seem that they would be in competition, correct?
Correct. All right, if there are no further questions, I would like to thank you for your time and introduce Sabrina Wood to speak.
Your last, your, excuse me, but your last comment said that there are no other solutions. I was just told before you stepped up to the plate, there was solutions of, of partnering, partnering with Tammy Day and then the Norfolk Coalition and that sort of thing. So there is, there is a solution.
With this, with our accelerated timeline. So that solution, I believe, if I'm remembering the presentation correctly, um, they would have to, uh, it's like a, six months to a year for them to create, to do the construction to the Dayco's center. Um, but again, you'd have to ask Tammy Day about her timeline. But there's no timeline that would create 127, um, positions or open spots for children within the year that I know of.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, any further Republican input?
All right. My name is Angie Bailey. Some of you may see me as a familiar face. My wife and I actually adopted a baby who was born in mid-March. We had heard there was a childcare shortage in Norfolk, but didn't know the extent of it till we found ourselves in the position of trying to find childcare, quality childcare in Norfolk. We have spent countless hours on the phone, brainstorming, and even asked family friends to consider assisting with childcare. And we still do not have a permanent solution. Childcare in general is an issue in the community, and then needing to care for an infant on top of it leaves you with a really big problem with the ratios for infants. There simply aren't options right now that provide a safe and quality childcare in this community and that would meet our timeline, um, that type of thing. We are fortunate and privileged, as Dana talked about, that, you know, we, we have family that can assist in the meantime. My wife does have somewhat of a flexible job that we, we can make it work. It's not great, but we can make it work. But what about families, as Dana talked about, who depend on two incomes and work standard jobs where we can't just work, they can't just work from home like my wife and I do? And in, in many cases, parents are left to leave kids with family members, so they're missing out on those developmental opportunities that the WELL talked about, or with other people who it may not be the safest option. The WELL is attempting to solve a need that they have, and they're taking it one step further to help a community need. So please consider supporting the WELL initiative to improve childcare in Norfolk community. And I believe there is a letter. Can I have a copy so I can read Michelle Lawson's? Is there a copy I can have at the right time I have? All right, um, as mentioned, this is written by Michelle Lawson of the Wesley Center, which by the way, we called them to, No Openings. Uh, my name is Michelle Lawson. I'm the Director of the Wesley Center Childcare and Preschool. I've been the Director of Wesley Center for 24 years. Thank you for taking time to investigate the need for child, for quality childcare in Norfolk. With several home childcare programs and childcare, childcare centers closing their doors, this leaves a large gap that needs to be filled. This is not a new problem in Norfolk. It, having been short quality childcare homes and centers for many years, COVID really caused childcare programs to struggle and close many doors. Daily, we receive multiple phone calls for immediate childcare openings, and they have to be put on our waiting list. We all need to work together to accommodate our young families and ensure a safe and healthy community for our children. We know there are plenty of families in our community that are still in need of childcare. If we want our community to grow and businesses to remain open, we need to have a safe place for the employees' children to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions for Angie? Hey. Any other Republican input before we move on? No need to be nervous.
All right. All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Sabrina Garner.
Welcome.
I am a graduate of not only the DDP program at the WELL, but also the Mommy Me program. Um, I'm coming to you. I didn't write anything. I'm just coming up here and speaking from my heart because that's what I know to do. Um, I prayed before I came up here and just had Scott to speak for me. I make it emotional. This is something that I'm very passionate about. Um, I'm not a native from your community. I moved here from Hastings. Um, I've struggled with my addiction for the majority of my adult years, a lot of my teenage years. Um, I grew up in the Sandhills of Nebraska, um, in the 80s. So, um, I was subject to a lot of bullying, um, sexual molestation, things of that nature. Um, I know that my parents did the best that they could with what they were provided at that time. Um, but I didn't have an outlet really to deal with a lot of those issues that, um, that I sustained. Uh, fast forward, um, I've done eight years in the federal penitentiary, uh, behind my addiction. Um, I have six children. Um, five of those children were raised by family members and things, um, due to my addiction and my choices. Um, and then I have a seven-year-old back here named Olivia. Um, I got out of prison, I got pregnant with her. My addiction still crept up and, um, it was my way always to deal with things in life, whether it be financial issues, um, just stress, uh, lots of different things. So, let's see, in about 2020, right before I came here, about two years ago, um, my addiction again. I was in pretty deep in it, and I found myself, out of all of my children, never having a CPS case, and I landed one with her. Um, I never thought that my addiction would take me there. I had struggled with my addiction, um, smoking mostly, um, to actually changing to intravenously towards, towards the end of my addiction. Um, I was so lost. Um, I was broken. Um, I felt like I was in the belly of the beast, trying to fight City Hall. Sorry. But, um, there just weren't very many avenues or, um, and I had pretty much exhausted every treatment center in the state of Nebraska. I've been to Nova, um, I've been to SOS, SRP, um, like I said, prison. And I was flailing about trying to find someplace that could help me not only with mental health issues, um, but my motion regulation, parenting, and to most importantly, gain my daughter back. That was something I don't think, that was another cross that I couldn't bear. That was something I don't think, that was another cross that I couldn't bear. I bore five of those before because of my choices, because of my addiction. So I, in a drug-induced haze, stumbled upon the WELL. And I called, and within less than 48 hours, I was in my mother's car. She drove me six hours over here from where we lived, and I've been here ever since. I don't want to say I sailed through the program at all, but I definitely had a group that rallied around me, that held me up, that sat in the, that sat in the rooms with me over phone conferences with my team for my daughter. My daughter was still in Hastings. I would drive, they would let me go on passes and drive the two hours there to pick her up on Fridays, two hours back, spend the weekend with her, which was pretty much a day, and then the next morning, to drive two hours back, take her back, going through all of their programs. I mean, there's just so many emotion regulation, the anger management, from trauma to everything that is included there, to finally having this part, and like I said, just the support of Donnie, Lara at the time that was with Mommy &amp; Me. Soon as I got to DDP, they put me right on the list for the Mommy &amp; Me program. My daughter came April 1st, and I did get custody back of her. She came to the WELL, to the Mommy &amp; Me with me, and from there, we did a lot of the Circle Security, Circle of Security, which Jess Mulberry, which I believe one of them read her letter earlier, she's my therapist, through the wraparound services that I still, and as I said, I graduated there about, it'll be a year in July. But with the wraparound services, I still have one-on-one counseling with her every week. She sees my daughter, Olivia. She got Circle of Security certified to help work with the, which Circle of Security really focuses on attachment with your child. Basically, in layman's terms, because I don't use all the big jargon, but it's basically that allowing a child to feel their feelings, to sit with them, to not shut them down, to allow them to express, to cry, to be angry, to be sad, and not, you know, try to comfort them with giving them something to placate them. These are the things that have helped and that helped me, the things that literally back in Hastings, they saw that helped me regain the custody of my daughter. And, I mean, it takes a village to raise a family, and I want to say kind of living proof of that. My daughter's here with me right now because I don't have family here. My family is the WELL, my support. Also, I heard some things for the connection program, for the connection project. I go to meetings there. Your community is so rooted and so big on the recovery. And I don't just want to focus on that because it would also outreach to the rest of the community as well. But what a wonder, what a joy it is that today I sit on the PTO for Grant Elementary for my daughter. I went to the parade that was downtown. We came from there, just from here, so we went and walked all the way around town, but, and then came here. I found myself again, and I'm still finding myself. I left an abusive relationship here not too long ago, just in recovery. That sergeant right back there, he helped me. And, I mean, just the, just, I mean, your guys' outreach and then just the community and everything is just fantastic. I work at A to Z messaging here in town. I have a wonderful boss. She's also a foster mom, so she does have a little area cubicle in the back where my daughter can watch YouTube videos. And sometimes she has to come to work with me because I too struggle to find daycare. I was given that list from here at the community place, and with all those daycares on it, I sat one day last week and went through the entire list. And there's just waiting list after waiting list after waiting list. And some, a lot of people don't accept child subsidy, and I do fall under those brackets. And I have, I work 40, 40 hours a week. I also work some hours remote. I do have an office that's set up at my house to work remote. Right now, thankfully, she's in school, so I work that, I work my schedule around her for eight to three, but those summer months are quickly approaching. So I can tell you that I love the support that I have here in this town. That's one thing from an addict's perspective, but that desperation that they spoke about oftentimes takes us back when what we know is the quick, easy money, the quick, easy way out. So please help somebody like me and my daughter continue to thrive in their community and support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina, for having the courage to come up and share your story. And it's helpful, not only in shining light on the importance of childcare services for your situation, but also telling the story of what the WELL does in the community, life-changing services for a lot of people. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Any other public input? All right. Well, with that, any further council discussion? We've had an extensive discussion. Any final comments?
I'll just say that. I know I'm passionate about it. I just don't like the way this came about and the way this went forward. We knew this has been on the, on the list to be on the agenda for a long time, and I just don't like the way it all came about. I know when the building was sold or originally bought back in December and just all the emotions tied to it. I am for childcare. I am for the WELLS. So I don't want to be like, I'm against that, but I do believe in the free market. I do believe that we should have, we should have had a better application process with this. And I do believe that we could have done better on our end from the cities of handling this. Because I know people have applied for those funds, and they don't feel like they're available to them, Candace. So that's what kind of bothers me about it. I've had people that have talked to you and spoke about this, and they're like, well, she says she already has applications. So from that standpoint, I'm bothered by it. From the other standpoint, I see the community need, and it pulls at me, it really does. So thanks to everyone sharing tonight.
I think what I'll, I stayed quiet and listened, obviously, but we need to remember that legislature changed the rules to allow applicants like this to come forward. And on top of that, they do have to provide workforce. And if they don't, they're held accountable for not doing that. That's just part of the bill. So they met every criteria required, and it was brought forward to us, and that's what we have the decision to make of yes or no, do we support that? As an applicant, they check the boxes. There, you have to decide whether that's in your best interest to allow them to have those remaining funds, and LB-840 is done and gone after that or not. So, but we definitely have to keep in mind that they met the criteria as it was set out by our state.
Well said. I'd have to add to that by the fact that, you know, the next applicant to come in, the chances of them creating 12 jobs right off the bat and/or affecting the employment of 60 other people in the community just by having, providing that daycare for 125 kids is a pretty big, it's a pretty big check on that box, right? So that hits all the LB-40 criteria, so.
Other comments?
I do support, I do support the WELL. I do support what you guys do. I'm kind of, kind of on the same leg as Justin here, is the process wasn't what we're used to. And there were some things that were, that were in question, so. But I do support what you guys do for behavioral and mental health and wanting to do this daycare, so.
For my part of it, I'll just say this. Of course, I don't have a vote unless you guys split on this evenly, but I think there are some considerations, given the discussion tonight, that we should be mindful of. One is Shane made the point earlier, the childcare burden still today falls most heavily on women. And I look around, and there's not a woman represented on this council. I have to think that this conversation among us might be different if that weren't the case. To Jim McKenzie's point, this is, this is an application to the LB-840 program, of which it's at the end of the road. There's remaining funds that have to be expended by September. To Corey's point, the state of Nebraska has made childcare an economic development issue, recognizing the critical need that exists not only in our community but across the state. Allowing working mothers and families to engage fully in the workforce makes it an economic development issue. Thirdly, this is a unique service. This application is not only the only application before us, it's unique in the fact that it provides a service that no one else does in the community. It provides behavioral health services that aren't available to people who need them. There's a lot of vulnerable people and kids in our community, and the WELL is offering help where it wouldn't otherwise be offered. And I don't think we can dismiss the critical shortage brand. This is, if ever there's time for action among this council, it's now. Is this a perfect solution? Does it solve all the answers? No, but it is part of the solution. And I would say if you're opposing this tonight, I want to see it at the task force meetings going forward. Again, the only applicant before us. This is a well-established organization. I saw a lot of passion here tonight, commitment and expertise, an organization that employs 80 people in this community. I think they've demonstrated through their board and staff the willingness to take this. Not easy, feet on, but the will and the capability to do it. So with that, I'll stop. Any other comments before we vote? Okay? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Back to the agenda. Item 24, would look for a motion to entertain consideration of Resolution Number 2023-19, approving a sidewalk waiver requested by Trevor and Elizabeth Austin for property located at 3414 West New Core Road.
I'll make a motion for consideration of Resolution Number 2023-19.
Second.
Motion in second. And for some background on this, Val Grimes, our city planner.
Yes, thank you. Based on this address, it's between 25th and 37th Street on West New Core Road, so that is kind of towards the edge of our ETJ, about that half, three-quarter mile edge. This is a piece of property that, you know, probably a year ago, got a zone change from Ag to RR and a plat to split one 10-acre lot into two, like a three and a seven. So the three-acre lot is now wanting to build a house, which then kicks in the sidewalk requirement, and so that's why we're here tonight. There are no sidewalks close to that, and the proposed resolution has kind of our standard things in there that says it's temporary until sidewalks are installed in the abutting area. The plan would make provisions in grading for future sidewalk so that it remains free from landscaping and other land development that would prohibit the sidewalk installation in the future. And then the city council reserves the right to request the installation at any time, regardless of this or any other waiver. So that's what is before you tonight, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Val.
Is there place gravelled?
Probably. I don't know.
Question? If the road in front of their place was gravelled?
Correct.
And then are you, are they required to put an apron up there at all on the?
If the, if the access road is gravel, then no, they don't have to put in an apron. If it is paved, then they would have to have that 30 feet.
I think so, without the apron, it would be kind of foolish to put a sidewalk in.
Yeah.
Val, what was the planning commission vote on this?
It was a unanimous vote to say yes.
Okay. And it does include the standard requirements that should develop and encroach on the property those sidewalks would be ordered in?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Any public input on this? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023-19 is adopted.
Well, that's a good question, Councilman. Is there a planning commission report on this that we need to read? Just for the sake of the record.
On April 18th, 2023, the Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the waiver of subdivision requirements submitted by Trevor and Elizabeth Austin. The waiver of minimum subdivision sidewalk requirements is requested from those set out in Chapter 23-42 of the City Code of Norfolk, and property address is 3414 West New Core Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the sidewalk waiver request with a seven to zero vote.
Okay. With that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2023-19 is adopted.
All right. 25, would look for a motion to consider approval in agreement with PROS Consulting for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the amount not to exceed $90,620.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Second.
Okay. For, to kick off discussion on this, Nate Powell, our Parks and Rec Director.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll try to make this brief tonight. We'll be getting PROS on the, on the line here. I'm just going to do a recap. The council did vote no on this. They asked to wait till we were done with our Johnson Park contract issues that we were resolving. We've been able to do that and move that forward. In the meantime, though, the no was kind of a blessing, and I don't always say don't, you know, no every time, but, you know, this one was actually a blessing in disguise. A couple of days later, there was, it was not long after, there was a grant that became available with the help of economic development. We applied for the QCT grant. That's the Qualified Census Track Grant. It asked them to fund 90% of our master plan project, and that was approved. Those $81,500 will be grant funded, and that brings $9,120 for matching funds. There was, we had $100,000 budgeted, so we'll have $90,880 under budget for this, for this plan. The contract, the first task is project management and preparations. Task two would be community profile and needs assessment. Task three is facilities and recreation assessment. And task four is our implementation plan. How are we going to implement it moving forward? The benefits is fiscal, trying to be fiscally responsible. Our current cost recovery is down to 17% in 2022, and that's down from 30% in 2012. We want to improve our facilities. We want to have accountability with our staff. I think it also gives direction for staff, for elected officials, and now for our new board that we're going to discuss next. We have representatives here. Are they on the line?
Yes.
Okay. From PROS Consulting, and I'll have them introduce themselves. I'm not sure who all made it this late, but I'll go ahead and let them introduce themselves.
Yes, this is Will Younger with PROS Consulting. Thanks for being, and thank you for the introduction, Nathan.
Is that Will? Did I hear?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so if you have any questions for Will from PROS Consulting or myself, I'd be happy to answer those.
I don't care who takes the, who takes the question. A recreational master plan like this, what, how many years can we expect this to scope over? I mean, are we talking like a decade? Are we talking a couple of decades? What is the, what is the average recreational master plan, life expectancy?
Nathan, I can go just based off of, we've done over 1,000 of these across the country, but typically we would do, I would say best practice is every five years. That's what NRPA and CAPRA, National Recreation Park Association, require if you want to be CAPRA certified, which is a certification they offer, but typically it's between five and 10 years is the length for a typical Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Nate, when's the last time Norfolk's done one?
The last one we did was 2010. Yep.
Okay.
And if we're doing our job, I think the five years is if we're meeting those goals, we're trying, we're trying to meet the goals that we've set, and, you know, we want to work fast and get as much done as we can. work fast and get as much done as we can. You know, in the last one I did, it took about five years to get to that point, but there were some big projects in there that are going to take longer because you have to go out and find the funding and get things to move those projects forward.
Okay. So, so the master plan is a decade or less expectancy, and this, this is, this is for all of our parks, correct? This is, this is a general plan for all of our parks?
That's correct.
Okay. So from speaking with one person here in the last couple of days, would have this master plan from the last time we did it, and you said it was 2010, would have, would have that identified what's going on at Johnson Park, and would have it identified the upgrades to Tahoe prior to what, what we have going on right now in both parks?
I think it addressed the improvements that we made in Tahoe, specifically trail improvements, from my, from my memory. I do believe that there was also riverfront improvements in Johnson Park that were, that were in that, I think that were also addressed. Most of the major items in there, including AquaVenture, was also addressed. I'm pretty sure that, that they, they nailed all those. There were some things that just, you know, not everything is going to make it, you know. They have some wishlist items, I think, that just are outdated now, not, not a need today.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, so for some of these bigger projects, I think this, the person that I was speaking with, the bigger projects would be identified, and we could start planning for our larger projects well in advance rather than the shortcoming time.
That's correct. Yep. Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, I just want to note the resourcefulness of staff on this. We discussed this earlier in the year. There were some specific things that needed to get worked through within parks, but in the meantime, staff looked for alternative sources of funding to pay for 90% of this plan, and were successful through a state grant.
We had a lot of help from economic development.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this?
Just one, one quick one. I don't, we don't need to jump into it too much, but it says surveys, public forums, online, statistically valid surveys with the internet, mail, email, phone. Just a general outline, what's that look like? Maybe, was it Ed? Is that his? Will? Could Will maybe could hit on that, what that looks like?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I could, I could barely hear part of it, but was it in regards to statistically valid survey and how that's implemented?
Yeah, correct. So the, what the public forum surveys, yeah, what that looks like in general.
Yeah, so normally what we'll do, well, we would always start, the needs assessment portions are first, first phase of these. So we would obviously interview each one of you individually, and then we would have an open public forum that's open to the entire public. We'll have focus groups and stakeholder interviews with other elected officials and, you know, sports groups. It could be, you know, other park advocates, the chamber, you know, park board, obviously. And then we would then have an online survey that anyone in the community in Norfolk can take. And then we also have a statistically valid survey, which we use with our partner ETC Institute out of Olathe, Kansas, and we've done over 500 surveys with them. But what they do is they ensure that the, that the survey responses match the age segments and the demographic of your community, which gives us really, really good data. So we, we kind of get it from both a statistically valid as well as an online open. So we, I mean, I would say with a community your size, we would probably end up with close to over 1,000 responses between those two survey methods. Towards the end of the project, we'll come back and do another public forum on our findings and plemmete recommendations, which is our second public forum, but that's typically the community engagement process that we use, and that's what we've outlined with Nathan and his, his group on this master plan.
Any other questions or comments? Any public input on this? Let's not ruin the streak we've got going here, Jim.
We can't keep this going forever, so. I just have a question. You know, sometimes these plans call for facilities that are not attainable through tax revenue. So how do we control a level set, what we can do and what we can't do? I mean, I hate to come up with a plan that says, we're going to do all these things, but there's no way that it's going to be supported tax-wise. How do, how do you address that in the process? And then is there also discussion or process regarding alternative funding methods? So how do you, how do you control it so it just doesn't get out of hand?
Yeah, so Nathan, I hope you don't mind if I, if I take that question, but usually we have a funding and revenue strategy scope item in this that's going to look at alternative revenue sources that may not have been looked at. But when it comes to larger capital projects, we kind of bucket it into like three different categories. So we have kind of a sustainable alternative, which is just to maintain your park system as it currently is and at its level, as well as an expanded services, which could be, you know, like adding an additional ball field or dog park. But then, you know, for those huge, big ticket items that are like, you know, they're more visionary, those ones, you know, we have them as a recommendation because that's what we heard from the community, but unless there is a dedicated funding source or an alternative funding source, then it may not be attainable. But at least it was, it's identifying what the community desires or in need. So it, you know, if there's kind of three tiers to how we kind of look at that, as well as doing a full alternative funding source of review.
Okay. Thank you. Good conversation. Anything else? Any comments or questions here?
I guess the only question I would have is, Will, would, do you have any availability to find those funding sources or recommend them to staff?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's a, that's a critical part. We tie it to the capital improvement plan. So like whatever's identified in the park assessments or from the community, those funding sources will then be tied for those projects.
Okay.
As, as opportunities.
Thank you.
Good question. Any others? Any further comment? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Right. Item 26 would look for a motion to consider approval of the mayor's appointments to the Norfolk Parks and Recreation Board of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, of Patrick Gearhart, Austin Truex, and Melissa Temple, each for a three-year term ending January 2026. Jarrett Mills, Bill Robinson, and Becky Wolf, each for a two-year term ending January 2025. And, and Dover, Terry Raspisson, and Angie Bailey, each for a one-year term ending January 2024.
I'll make a motion for consideration. I'll second that.
Motion in second. I'll just make a few comments here. Nate, if you want to add anything, you can. Very pleased by the response in terms of number of applications received for these positions. I think altogether, we had nearly 25 people from, throughout the community apply, and it was a great pool of qualified candidates, so these weren't easy decisions. Considerations were made by the fact that we needed representation from each of the four wards, and that there was a vast variety of backgrounds and perspectives and experiences represented within this pool of candidates. So I do want to say thank you to everyone who applied and encourage those who maybe not were selected in this instance to look at other volunteer board positions into the future. And Nate, anything you want to add? Anything else?
Sorry, there's a diverse group of people here that think that would be good for the board, in a range of ages, just personally knowing some of them, but, yep, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nate. Any questions or comments?
Sorry, just, just one quick one. The applicants that didn't make it onto the board currently, knowing that we have, let's say, one year before the next openings, are they left in AQ or, or some sort of, I guess, database? I don't know what to call it for a word.
Yep. Administrative staff keeps a file of all applicants, so we can go back to some of those. And there were, I would note that some applicants applied for other boards, you know, besides parks, and so we want to do our best to fit people to other, other opportunities to serve.
And ones that didn't apply could still apply.
Yes, yes, right. And we did have a few applications that came in after the deadline, and they'll be put in the same pool. Okay. Yes, sir.
My name is Tim Ernst again, and I guess I'm not familiar with this whole process, but anyhow, I don't quite understand why we're paying $90,000 to this outfit to tell us what we need for parks, and why we're having this 12-member community input for free, why we have a Parks Director supposed to know kind of what we need for parks and stuff, too. It seems like that $90,000 is just going down a rat hole. So that's what it looks like from the outside looking in.
I just want to address that. I think I 100% disagree. It is, from, from many things that we've heard, it's about community outreach and trying to find out what this community wants in parks. We've heard plenty on Tahoe, obviously by the vote.
Yeah.
We've heard plenty about Johnson's Park. We've heard plenty about Liberty Bell. And to have community involvement, which is part of what that grant opportunity and $9,000 out of our money is paying for, I know 90,000 is tax money, but if we don't use it, somebody is, right? You already paid it.
I understand.
So to have community involvement to try and find out what we really want for parks, what we really need, or maybe what we don't need, right, is the best way to go about it. And I think a $9,000 price tag and having volunteers that are willing to be part of that to help out in a community speaks loudly of what this community might want, and will be put in a better direction rather than being put on a pedestal of, why were you guys picking to do this, or this, or this? Where it's a, it's a community involvement as a whole. And that's a, that's a great thing. That's a great thing. Rather than anybody sitting up here trying to make a decision, or us trying to put out a survey that has little input, and then we have a large vote that has a difference.
I can understand that, that where the community, you know, they know what the community wants and this and that, but I guess from the outside looking in, spending 90 grand for some of their outfit to come in and say what we need and stuff, and probably some of it's going to be unattainable.
We, we don't know that, right?
Is there, you know, is there a way where some of these other improvements and stuff, a guy can look out there and see if there's grants available for that? Because I happened to be here the night when the council shut down the first option for $90,000, and then poof, three weeks later, we got a grant for 81 grand, you know? Are they that easy to come by for everything, or what?
I think, I can't speak on that because I wasn't involved, and maybe somebody else can on, and on administration, but after we voted that down, it sounded like that grant came about, came out, and we applied for that grant, and, and we're receiving of it.
In your mind, Tim, is that a bad outcome? That we, is that a bad outcome, that we heard input from citizens with, about concern with some of the tax dollars? And I'll remind you, these were ARPA funds, these were other federal tax dollars that were going to be used, but then citizen input was heard and gathered by staff, and they were resourceful enough to find other funds to get the job done.
Well, yeah, it's, you know, maybe there's some other grants out there, too, that I could get to fix up the ball fields and stuff like that. I want to do.
And that will be part of this process, as we just discussed with the Parks Master Plan. We'll explore, part of it, we'll be exploring all the avenues that are out there, including grants to pay for park improvements.
I, I agree with you 100%. I hope there is more grant opportunities to help pay for park, park items like that. I think the ball fields need attention. I think there's plenty of things on the parks that need attention, not just ball fields, right? Just general park in general.
And, you know, the, some of that stuff is, at City MH, the newcomers is very important. And one of the first things they see when they come into town is stuff that's not fixed, it's junk, you know? And it can't possibly take two years to figure out how to fix something, you know? It's.
But it, but it takes money and budgeting, right?
Well, yeah.
And if you budget too much to parks, then we hear about it about the streets, right? Am I wrong?
Well, yeah. I know, baby. But, you know, we're.
It's not always an easy decision.
We're throwing money at Johnson Park like there ain't going to be another day. So, you know, there has to be kind of a happy medium there somewhere where, you know, everything needs to be fixed.
There's a lot of grants that, that helped out on Johnson's Park also. I don't necessarily know the dollar amounts, but.
A lot of grants and partnerships and private money that helped make that project possible.
Right. Of the, of the huge part of Johnson's Park, the city's part was, we, we did have a substantial amount of money in it.
Yeah.
But compared to what the total cost is, not so much.
Well, yeah, I understand there's a lot of NRD money and what you have in there and stuff, but there's still a lot of city money, too, so.
I agree.
And it's not done yet.
It'll look great. You'll use it.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Any other public input?
Randy D.
Evening.
I'm one of the 25 applicants that didn't get chosen. I just want to say that I saw the list of people that weren't chosen, and I know several people, and good choice, Mr. Mayor. I do hope that I am chosen in the future. I believe Parks and Recreation is a, something we definitely need to put money to, but we need, you know, public input to do it. So I definitely love the people you chose and hope you will choose me in the future. That's it.
Thank you, Randy. Thanks for coming forward and being willing to volunteer for that. Any other public input? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 27 under administrative reports. This is a presentation of the Community Development Agency's 2022 Annual Tax Increment Financing Report to Governing Bodies, and this will be delivered by Randy Gates with an emphasis on brevity, I think, Randy.
Yes, this is a, I'll be, I'll be short. This is a report required every year by the state as part of the community development law. It's got to be given to every governing body whose taxes are impacted by the city's TIF projects, so the city's one of them, County College, County Educational Service, you know, Natural Resources Districts, and so on. The report must include the total number of TIF projects, total estimated project costs, initial projected assessed valuation compared to assessed value as January 1 of the prior year, number of TIF projects paid and full during the year, percentage of the city designated blighted, and number of TIF projects approved during the year, and then you got to give further information on those projects that were approved during the year. We approved five TIF projects during the year. Three were residential, one was commercial, and one includes both residential and commercial. Maximum TIF for these five projects is about $9 million, and that leverages $47 million in private investment for a total project cost of over $56 million. Including the agenda pack, that is the 2022 TIF report that shows this. We also had 19 reports, 19 TIF projects existing prior to 2022. None of those were paid off during the year. So we got 24 TIF projects in total at the end of 2022. Total estimated project cost for all 24 TIF projects is $276,872,000. 27.28% of the city has been declared blighted and substandard. This is out of the maximum of 35% the statutes allow. That leaves somewhat over 900 additional acres that could be declared blighted and substandard. And answering any questions?
Thank you, Randy. Any questions? Okay. Seeing none. Oh, oh, sorry.
Jim McKenzie. Again, we can't keep the streak alive. So, TIF, I did some calculations, and I'm sure they're not exactly accurate, but I took the, the 91 million of the original projects, I think the assessed valuation of those original projects, I'm not mistaken, and then I added Legacy Bend Phase 2, just use their initial projection, and then I added the actual. added the actual projected valuation of the 2022 projects. I came out with a total valuation of all of those that would be taxable of $141 million. And that's obviously not including what the previous valuation would be before the project was begun, but usually those are pretty minimal. But if you take the $141 million times 2022 levy, it comes up $2,773,000 of taxes that would have been collected without TIF just in one year. Obviously, that's probably high because of the other valuation things I talked about, and some of those aren't going to assess out at the same valuation that they're projected to be, but let's say instead of 2.7 million, it's 2.2 million or 2 million. Over 15 years, that's $30 million of taxes that won't come to the city, or the schools, or the county, or anybody else that have to be made up by the rest of the taxpayers of the community. So those people living at home that are meeting household income of $50,000, $51,000, they're making up those tax dollars. So are the people who are making less than the median household income. They're making that up. So somebody has to make that up. So I would urge you, I mean, TIF has its purposes. It has a value. It has a, you know, a good purpose, but we also have to be cognizant of the impact it has on the average taxpayer. Somebody's got to make that up. So Lincoln, Nebraska, it seems like in Norfolk, it's a free-for-all. I mean, whoever comes and asks for TIF, you get TIF. And I realize you have to say your project's not sustainable or possible without TIF. I mean, nobody audits that. It's pretty creative. Anybody can pretty much get as creative as they want. So Lincoln actually has, in 2022, they have their tax increment financing policies guidelines, where they actually limit TIF to a more controlled selective purpose. And I would urge the city to take a look at that, because right now, I don't see anybody coming here and asking for TIF that's not going to get it. And the rest of the taxpayers are going to have to make up that difference. So I would just urge you to give that some consideration and think more closely about the future use of TIF. We can't just constantly give it to everybody, because that's, you know, tens of millions of dollars that the rest of the taxpayers have to make up. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. And I guess it was too good to be true that the streak would continue. I just want to say, the numbers, and appreciate that analysis, but I think it doesn't account for the fact that most likely a lot of that development wouldn't have otherwise happened. That is bringing new economic activity, new sales tax base, and eventually higher evaluations. And beyond that, the basis, I think it's important to remember with TIF, the basis on the property tax is still paid during that time. It's not like property tax goes away altogether on that property. That, again, probably, otherwise, you could make the argument, would not be redeveloped. So I just want to make those points. Any other public input on that administrative report? Or any other comments? Okay, we can move on then to the last item on the agenda, and that's item 28, which is a closed session. In order to go into that, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest to discuss pending litigation.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, second.
Motion in second. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Motion carries. Again, this closed session is for the sole purpose of updating elected officials on pending litigation.
I'd make one, second.
Motion second. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
With that, this meeting of the Norfolk City Council is concluded. We are adjourned.